Make that modification, two lines down it says Margaret interviewed, should be Margaret Landon interviewed. And I'd like to add in the three paragraphs below that, the discussion about the block party that just that, a sentence that there was a discussion about the request being for Halloween night. And two paragraphs below that says, talking about the school building committee, just a clarification where it says, Mr. Crane indicated the town share of the projects likely to be above the originally, it says contemplated amount, it's actually communicated amount. That's a clarification. And also.
Communicate?
Communicated.
Well, okay.
It wasn't contemplated amount, you can use, if you want a different word, I'm okay with that.
No, I just, well, then that would raise the question, communicated by whom?
Budgeted, budgeted, you know, whatever it is, it's, it's, it wasn't a comp- contemplated amount, it was an amount that was, was communicated to the residents of town.
Approved, maybe?
Approved.
Approved amount?
That's fine. And, and just completing that sentence where Mr. Crane noted, it said, Mr. Crane noted that there have been changes, I'd like to see it say, Mr. Crane noted that among the reasons is that there have been changes in the MSP, that's not the only reason, I think we should clarify that. And also then, three paragraphs further down, and I can get these all to you, Jaclyn, so.
Thank you.
Just some comments about, Mr. Gold expressed concern about, I'd like to do some clarification there, it says, Mr. Gold expressed concern about conducting the select board's business, it says in public, and about doing, and I have no problem with conducting the business in public, but I'd clarify by saying business in newspapers, and about doing performance reviews of the town manager, and opinion articles in the newspaper, and I think that's what I was speaking about. And those were my, would be my.
Anyone else have any?
Yeah, I have some corrections, right after, I just lost my paper, where are we going here? There we go, I'll go back to this. Under where we approve people for, where Mark made the correction to Margaret Landon, their next paragraph below that, I already got it back, it said, Mr. Santinella commented it may be time to put up a select board's own anti-casino resolution on the warrant, and he suggested it may be time to constitute a charter commission. I actually made a motion to constitute a charter commission for review of the charter that was seconded, I believe, by Mr. Foster, and voted down three to two, with Mr. Foster and I voting yes, and the other three members voting no.
That was in there, because I saw the same thing, Paul.
Where was it?
It was in later in the.
Yeah, I lost them where they are.
And it's actually, I think it's in the next, in the minutes of the next meeting.
It can't be both.
No.
No.
I, I.
Okay, you're right, we know what we voted on, I'm in the following meeting, 21st.
Meeting, it was the following meeting, and I saw that, it was in the following meeting, okay.
And the only other thing is that it's, there's, when we're talking about the casino subcommittee report, right after the block party request on Green Acre, it states that I, quality, that I noted the quality life will be impacted by Springfield Casino, but that impact could be diminished by improvements in other areas of town. And I think that what I was conveying was that, there's, that we could look at that as a possibility of, not that, that's what we were going for. I don't want it to sound like that's our strategy for the casino negotiation, is that that was a suggestion, not something that I was supporting, I guess, is.
Is there wording you want changed?
No, I just, I just want to make note of that, that's fine.
Any other changes in the minutes? Okay, all those in favor of amended minutes?
Right.
All opposed? Okay. Before we go further, I forgot one announcement, important one, I want to welcome Jaclyn Moore is our new minute taker, and thank you very much for joining us, we'll look forward to working with you this year.
Yeah.
And now I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of October 21st.
I'll move we approve the minutes of October 21st, also subject to some corrections.
Second.
And the corrections?
In, when we spoke about Article 14, actually it was Mr. Santinella and myself who voted against that, it was Ms. Angelides, and Mr. Foster, and Mr., and Mr. Grant, excuse me, it was Ms. Angelides, it was, it failed four to one.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It just doesn't say that Alex supported it, so.
Okay, was that right then?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I believe so.
All right, and, and down in, under select board comments, there's a.
Where is that?
Down near the bottom, select board comments.
I see, okay.
It said, Mr. Gold noted that the DPW was able to do the repairs to the pool surge tank without any additional cost to the town, it should say without any additional out-of-pocket cost to the town. The following sentence, it also said, noted the temperature control in the room that houses the town, I'd use computer servers, just to clarify it. And the final, and two more sentences down, feels that traffic signals, we have to move forward to fix the traffic signals if pedestrian safety issues detected, and not wait supplemental funding. And that was, I think, a portion of what I commented on.
Any other?
Yeah, I had one on a select board comments, it said, Mr. Foster noticed that the town manager's performance has been in compliance with the board directors, and that was taken out of context, that was very specific to one issue and one issue only, so I'd recommend that that, that either be put in the context or dropped.
What additional wording?
It was in, it was in a direct comment to a discussion that Alex was having with the town manager, as opposed to some activities that you were undertaking for the casino, and I chimed in towards the end of the discussion, saying that you were actually in compliance with the board directors on that.
And was the casino issue, should we just add those words?
Well, it was a very specific thing, and I don't remember the exact discussion, do you? I think it'd be easier just to strip it.
Well, I think it, I think it was, actually, I remember, I think it was with respect to the hiring of outside consultants.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's what I was addressing.
With the delay, was that just the consultants, or, yeah, that would have been the traffic too.
I took it more as a, I took it more as a general comment on the casino, on managing the casino issue generally, but you could also probably infer it as specifically to retaining traffic consultants.
Yeah, well, the way it's written, it's just a, just a drop comment that just says globally, and I wasn't praising you globally.
I think, I think I'm gonna cry.
I reserved it, right, you know, so, yeah.
So, do you want to add the word in regards to the casino?
Either modify and get it in context or drop it.
So, do you want to modify on the hiring of casino consultants?
I think, I think, actually, as far as I'm concerned, I'd like it to be easier to drop the comment.
Okay. Can we do that if it was said during a meeting?
It was said on camera, though.
If it was said in a meeting and it was taken the minute, you can't really strike something from the record.
Well, not everything that's said at the meetings reflected in our minutes, though. I yield to the chair.
Okay, so you're, you're asking for that to be removed, and we can vote on it, when we vote on the general changes.
Or modify that, really.
Any other changes to the minutes?
I have, under new articles, Article 12 to establish a charter review commission, Ms. Angelides, Mr. Grant, and Mr. Gold opposed, and Mr. Foster.
That was the one I was supporting, right.
Yep, and then also, down in, must have been a select board comments here, hold on. There was, under select board comments about halfway down, question of the conflicting DPW reports, and it says, Mr. Santinella noted discrepancy in the assessors department reporting, like more information on the risk. What it was is not a discrepancy, it was actually a tax liability case, it looked like similar to what we went through with Twin Hills, and I was asking for more information on the risk, so, it wasn't a discrepancy, it was actually a tax dispute, I guess, or abatement dispute that we're having with the property that could be costly, and I asked for more information on the risk.
On a assessment dispute?
On an assessment dispute, yeah, not a discrepancy, that doesn't.
Assessment dispute.
It really doesn't convey what I was talking about.
Okay.
It's not a discrepancy, it's a, there's a tax case that we're, we're.
Nice. Any other changes? Okay, all those in favor of the, approving the minutes with the?
Are we approving it with or without Mr. Foster's deletion?
Mr. Foster's requested the deletion, so we would approve it with the deletion.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. All those in favor of the amended, opposed, okay. Let's move on to approval of the minutes of October 30th special meeting.
I moved to approve the minutes of the October 30th, 2013 special meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion or changes? Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Abstain? Thank you, all right. We're moving on to reviewing our, for our town meeting tomorrow, and ask our moderator to please come to the table.
Please, my pleasure.
Tomorrow we have the Fall Town Meeting, and we have on, let's see, 11 warrants and two citizen petitions. Do you have anything, any special requests on how the meeting be run, or?
Well, I, I really wanted to get, well, the meeting will be run the way any other meeting is run. The issue of, you know, I have received one or two telephone calls about the casino article and, and how that will go, but, you know, the, these are, I guess there's, I don't know who the sponsor of the Article 13, is it Article 13?
We have Article 12 is overnight parking.
Right.
And Article 13 is the casino.
Right. So, I was, I was wondering about Article 13, who the, and the two citizen position, who they are.
I know the first one for Article, the overnight parking is Rick Pelcher.
Pelcher, yeah, I spoke to Mr. Pelcher.
Okay.
And he was a little, you know, he was a little confused as to, or seeking information as to how, you know, how he, what he does when he addresses the town meeting, how he does it, and I had a conversation with him on telephone, but it was a short conversation because he had to leave, but I'm hopeful of talking to him tomorrow night to make sure that he understands how the process works, and how you bring the matter before the town meeting and so forth, and the, and I received one telephone call about the casino article, and, you know, that article as well as any other article will be handled. I don't know whether, whether there's going to be any presentations made, whether there's going to be anybody outside of town meeting, anybody that's going to be asked to speak to the town meeting, who is either for or against this, but, I mean, outside of being a town meeting member. And so, I told him that we'll handle it the same way we will handle any town meeting article. The, the issue of, you know, from the, from the previous town meeting, I want to make sure that any visitors to our town meeting are in the designated areas. We ran into a problem the last time with one of the articles, where one of the visitors to our town meeting was right down there on the floor, and I want to make sure that any people who are not town meeting members are off the floor, or in, or in the designated areas. I have not heard anybody who was asked, outside of the town meeting, who was asked to speak, but any individuals who ask to speak, ask an individual to come before the town meeting to speak, and I don't know whether there is, will handle it the same way I always handle it, I'll ask town meeting if they have any objection to an individual speaking before the town meeting, and it'll only be to answer questions. There'll be no presentations or anything like that, I'm not aware of any presentations to begin with, but any person who wishes to speak before the town meeting, I'll ask town meeting if they have any objection, I don't, in the past, town meeting has been very gracious in allowing an individual, we had the Hamden Bank zone request a couple of years ago, where an individual asked to come before the town meeting, who wasn't a town meeting, I believe he was the owner of the property or a budding, perhaps you remember it, but he answered a, he made his presentation, he answered a couple of questions, and then he retired from the floor, but my approach is to, is with town meeting, at the town meeting's convenience, and not anybody else who's outside the town meeting. That's pretty much all I see with, other than that, the, the articles are all, you know, pretty straightforward. The one thing I did have a question about was, and that's why I was asking.
Mr. Cal, can I just, can you for a moment?
Can I finish?
You, okay, sorry, I was gonna answer your question, but, that you posed earlier, but I'll wait.
No, I, I just wanted to make sure that, that's why I was hoping that Dave Martell was here, because in Article 12, I'm not sure of the voting majority, whether that's a majority or a two-thirds vote, I, Mr. Pelcher, it, it seems to say repeal bylaw, Chapter 200, Section 4, 216, overnight parking, and I don't know what that means, I mean, I, from a legal standpoint, so, that's, that's pretty much the same quest, the question that I had.
We'll try to get that answer for you, definitely before tomorrow night.
Sure.
Does anyone have any questions for Michael or comments?
Sorry, I was just trying to help. The lead petitioner on Article 13 is Michelle Steger.
Michelle?
Steger.
Steger.
And I've advised her that typically the person who proposed, who submits the citizen petition has to literally read what's in the warrant, and then may or may not speak in favor of it.
No.
If there's something more to it than that, then I can never contact you.
No, that's not correct, because.
That's not, okay.
The, the article itself only informs the town meeting, the article, the actual motion may deviate in some respects, so long as it isn't material.
Right.
So long as it doesn't change the, the tenor or the, the article itself. So, you know, in Article 12's case, it's kind of a disjointed thing, I, you know, I probably will speak to Dave Martell and see whether or not the, what this article, I know what it's about.
Yeah.
I've spoke to Mr. Pelcher, but I, if this article comes as, as it is, that's, that's the article, but it, it could change, that's, that's the nature of an article, it informs the town meeting as to what is being discussed, and so the article could change, so long as the focus of the article, the overall tenor of the article does not change.
But it would not be improper to read it verbatim?
Oh, no.
Okay, that's all I was trying to convey.
Oh, no.
Mark?
Alex, one thing I think that people sometimes give petitions, don't understand when they read this, they would not read, I move to see if the town, they have to just move that to town, so, sometimes, and that, Mr. Cal, I know catches that all the time, but, you know, people need to understand, it's not, I move to see if the town will, I move that the town does, and, and that's a difference between a petition and a, and the actual motion. What I was gonna ask you, though, Mr. Cal, is, and, is if you had given any thought on any of these, but particularly the petitioners' warrant articles to, as to the scope of the, of the discussion and the debate that you may allow, I only say that because these may tend to elicit comments that broaden the scope beyond the scope of the, of the article themselves.
Like what?
Well.
Article 13 are you talking about, or?
Particularly, Article 13.
Or any general article?
You know, Article 13, I mean, you know, it, and I'll give you, is it proper for people to talk about the legislation from the state, whether it's proper or should have been passed or not? You know, if, if the, if the nature of the discussion got to be.
Yeah.
You know, about legislation that's already been passed, that is state law, we'd save everybody in the, in town meeting some time by saying that's, you know, we're here to debate whether the town will vote.
Yeah.
To oppose, not whether or not the state legislature was correct in what they did, for example.
Well, I, I, I don't want to put a muzzle on town meeting, I'll let it go to a, to a certain degree, but I think that's what my job is, is to keep the, the debate focused on what's on the floor, and not any of the extraneous stuff.
And I just, my comment was only because, you know, that may, I, I'm concerned that that may tend to move us.
Oh, sure.
From the, from the intent of the article to.
Oh, you're absolutely right, Mr. Gold, you're absolutely right. And so, you know, I would want to keep the debate focused on what the town is being asked to do by the motion.
I do want to clarify one thing, it was brought to my attention that the, one of the local newspapers carried a headline Sunday that would seem to indicate that it was some, I think it was ballot measure or something was used, I didn't see the headline directly, but I just wanted, in reference to the vote on Article 13, and I just wanted to clarify that, you know, the difference between town meeting and election, and I don't know if you've gotten any calls to that effect, Mr. Moderator, but I think that would, I, I think the, when I went online later today, it seemed like the headline was more, was more, was clearer and in line with what the process actually is for town meeting, but for anybody who's wondering, you know, who was confused about whether or not it was a ballot versus an article, it's, you know, for sure an article, not a ballot.
Right. I didn't see that in the paper, I must have missed it.
I just had a clarification, that you're saying that people that come to speak would have to be town residents.
Absolutely.
And the only way a non-town resident would speak was just to answer questions, if the town meeting.
You mean, somebody outside the town meeting? Yes, I, I think that the only other, I mean, it would be to, to answer questions, that's the way we did it the last time. And I, I think that this is, this is Long Meadows Town Meeting, and so my focus is on not the people that are outside that are coming into the town, I mean, I certainly would want, at the request of a town meeting member, to allow an outsider to come in and to, I'd say to answer any questions, because the focus of the debate is what, was what the motion is on the floor, and who's, who's in favor or against the, the particular motion. So, anybody who, and I think that, I think that the town meeting knows what the issue is all about, I don't think they don't, I don't think that they need anybody coming in with graphs and charts and an overhead projector to tell them what they already know. The, the motion is, is, the article is fairly clear, and, so, I imagine that the vote, any individuals that ask the town meeting to bring, to have somebody, either a proponent or an opponent, to the article, I'll allow it, but for a limited, for a limited reason, and, and only to answer questions.
Thank you. Any other questions, Paul?
No questions, just that we have two articles on which we're borrowing, and I believe those are two-thirds votes.
Really? Now, which one of those?
No, just simple majority?
Which ones are?
Article four, isn't that for the, for the borrowing, for the debt authorization?
Not borrowing, you're actually paying the debt service, not the previous borrowing.
Okay, so this isn't borrowing, we're just paying?
We're appropriating money to pay the debt service.
To pay the debt service, okay, I stand corrected.
So, are there any, or all these artic, I can go over with Dave, but are all of these articles call for a majority vote?
Looks like it. Just those two are the only ones that I have.
Well, Article, there's a notation on Article six, it said nine tenths for.
Yeah, we're adding Article six to the bill prior to year.
Oh, yes, that requires, it says it's a nine-tenths vote. But I don't know this, this Article 12, whether that is a majority vote, or whether it's, since it's involving a repeal of a bylaw, whether that's a majority vote, or whether it's a, a two-thirds. But I imagine I'll go over those with Attorney Martell tomorrow.
And I'll follow up with Stephen Crane before tomorrow night, so we'll make sure we get that nailed down.
Yeah.
I already requested the information from Attorney Martell.
Okay.
Did we post a notice of the town meeting on the north end, at the north end of town? I know I saw one at the south end of town.
I haven't seen, I did see the one on the south, I've not been up to the north end of town.
No.
I presume we did, I mean, I know that, I know the clerk's office, who handles, who makes sure those signs go up, had discussed that with the fireworks department, so.
Could you just check tomorrow morning, make sure?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Look forward to tomorrow night.
Yep.
In addition to that, if you go at the town website, longmeadow.org, you will find the warrant, and also a video that has been posted, our town manager will, explains the warrant, so you'll have a little bit of better understanding before you go to town meeting. I look forward to everyone coming tomorrow night at seven o'clock at the high school gymnasium. Thank you. And moving on, I have on the agenda, the casino forum, we had a, a very good evening the other night, where we discussed, or we gathered information on the casino forum, and residents' opinion, we received about 38 emails before the meeting, and I want to say I'm very excited that we had a live stream going on during the casino forum, and 29 people signed up. And so we had not just people in attendance, but also people following on their laptop, as well as some people watching through LCTV, and I'm hoping we'll be able to do a lot more of the live streaming. I want to thank Kevin Renda, IT, worked very hard on this, and did a fabulous job to get that up and going for us. The next time we do it, we'll probably let you know, but it would only be announced how to make the link the day of the event. Unfortunately, we can't do that for Fall Town Meeting, and hopefully you all come and vote on tomorrow night. Since the casino forum, the select board has received three more communications through email, two opposing, and one supporting the casino project.
Which one was, which one supported?
Um, let's see.
Will those be part of correspondence, or?
Yes.
Is that court, email correspondence? I think that was just to you.
Oh, I thought it went to everybody, oh, it was just to me. So, I did receive correspondence as the chair of the select board from Jessica and Stuart Young of Conver Street supporting it, and Megan and Andrew Hension of Dover Road opposing, and Shirley Fashi of, actually, I don't see her address here, opposing, and I'm sure we will hear tomorrow, more tomorrow evening.
And I think Nicole Shapiro, did you?
No, I didn't receive that since the.
That was copied to you.
On what date?
Uh, yesterday.
After the casino, oh, I didn't see that, I apologize. Okay, and moving on to.
Actually, I'd like to make a motion, make a motion to endorse Article 13. Actually, I'd like to make a motion, uh, make a motion to endorse Article thirteen.
I was hoping that we would get down to.
And that's already, we've already had that voted on, and.
Well, I, I, I would.
And I'm not sure if you can bring that.
There's a subcommittee report that I would just ask if you would make that motion then.
Well, I, okay, I'd, I'd be happy to.
The only reason is, I think, 'cause I really like to get to the budget stuff, and I will definitely second it then, but I would, I just wanna, I think that, I'd like to see the, the budget stuff, 'cause I, there's something missing, in my opinion, from our budget directive, so.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, well, I guess there's no second, so the motion.
As long as, uh, if I do make the motion later, are you gonna rule it out of order?
If, I would question, yeah, if you would be able to do the motion, because you have done the motion before and it failed, and my understanding of Robert's rules, since it failed on a supermajority, we would need to have someone else do the motion. But right now, it, it has, can't go forward, because there's no second.
Well, I, I think Paul is indicating that he's, he wants to second it later, but his opinion on whether he's gonna second it, if it's gonna be ruled out of order, then that might change his opinion, I would just like to note as a point of order that the entire premise of the casino forum was to allow the, the select board to vote on this issue, so I, I don't think it's improper in any way, 'cause that was the whole idea behind it.
And it sounds like Mr. Santinella will be doing that at a later point, but right now, the motion has not gone forward.
Okay, and are you going to, can, can we consider it later? I mean, you're not gonna rule it out of order?
If he files a motion later after the casino report, let's wait and see what happens. Okay, so right now, the, we'll move on to new business, um, on the approval of the budget calendar and budget instructions. Stephen, do you wanna tell us a little bit about what you've put together here?
Sure, uh, these are the budget instructions that are, I, I guess, to some extent, they're direct, they were distributed today, but these are the, the budget uh, instructions for the department heads as we prepare our fiscal year two thousand and fifteen budget. They are different from previous year's budget instructions in that they incorporate, um, the requests for information and format and structure of the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA, budget best practices, that's something that the select board had voted to, uh, to do, for the fifteen budget, and so these instructions, um, reflect some of the best practices that we were able to identify from GFOA. Uh, I think I would say that it is, in terms of, um, the actual directive, it is similar to previous years where it is, uh, a base level budget, which is essentially, uh, continuing to do the same functions that departments do today with the same number of people, the costs to do those, plus any personnel costs that have been increased through increase in health insurance and other benefit costs, as well as any kind of compensation tied to collective bargaining agreements that have been settled. So those costs are the base level, and we are, we are directing that, um, everything remain level for next year. If a department has a specific request for, uh, funding, for additional funding for a specific purpose, those need to be separate, uh, submitted separately from the base level budget, uh, and so we'll have, we'll be able to, we'll be able to evaluate all of the supplemental requests from departments on a separate track. So I, it's something new for the, for, uh, the town, it's something new for, um, the CFO and I, so we're learning as we're, we're going, and, uh, I'm excited to engage in the process.
I wanna thank you for putting it together, and I know you had to go back to look at the GFOA, and if you, um, when I attended the finance committee meeting in Franklin, I got the book, so if you, it makes it easier to just have the book to be able to review how the various departments are presenting.
Sure.
Yeah, just letting you know.
Um, I just keep, I don't know what I'm pushing over here, um, hold on, let me get to that director. So this went to department heads on Friday, the same day that we got it, and my question is, how do I, how do we identify six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars as a shortfall? But yet the budget directive tells our department heads to fund their budget at current levels of FTEs, including collective bargaining agreements, and I understand the thing about putting any other anticipated needs on the side as a sidebar, but why aren't the budget instructions showing, asking town departments to come in, include all departments, to come in with a budget that is six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars less than what we're expecting here, 'cause I, I, I don't, we're gonna make our department heads go through an exercise to produce a budget that's gonna bring, be brought to the select board minimally at six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in deficit. That's not a budget instruction, as far as I'm concerned, that's not, you're not creating a budget, you're creating a shortfall.
Okay.
So my question is, why would you, why, why do we have budget instructions that we know are gonna lead us to a budget that is, again, putting aside any issues that they might deem that they need this year, that aren't in there, but we're giving them a directive to come in six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars over budget, all departments, not just anyone in particular?
I would answer that by saying the, the deficit that we've talked about at the joint meeting, and talked about here, is a projection, and I think we say is based on conservative estimates, and is a projection, and it's important to establish, like I said, what is called the base level budget, so to essentially keep doing what we're doing next year, what would that cost us? And then the entire part of the budget drafting process, the intent, in fact, all we do when we start having our department head meetings and going through the numbers, is lining up, um, the revenues with expenditures, and if there is, if there does, if, if this deficit does stay consistent throughout the budgeting process, then expenditures would have to be reduced commensurately, obviously. But we need to start at a baseline budget to understand where, where and what we would cut, if there is in fact a budget deficit, so that's, you establish the baseline and, and work from there, and that's essentially what we're doing here.
I, I would assume.
And, and that is a budget directive.
I, I would assume the FY fourteen is the baseline budget, because our department heads have told us that's everything that they need to run the department. The only thing in here that's different is saying, give us level services plus collective bargaining agreements, and that's the only thing that's in here that I see a little bit different, so you're just adding in the collective bargaining agreements and keeping everything that we have, so we're not necessarily establishing, we're not saying that we're starting at zero base budget, so, but it's, we're saying there's a baseline, and I would imagine that FY fourteen is the baseline, because the only thing that's different is going to be the collective bargaining agreements, which increase two and a half percent or so, or two percent for next year, um, and maybe a little bit more counting steps, but the, we're, we're also, 'cause this directive's also going to the school committee and saying, come on in and tell us what you need, a level service this year, and I understand it's based on projections, I've been involved in budgets in town for eleven years, everything's based on a projection, but if the projection, projection from our CFO is six hundred and eighty-three thousand in the red, I think that has to be addressed in the budget directives, and quite frankly, I, the other issue I have is, I would have thought that we would have talked about the budget directive before it was sent out, so we could have maybe this conversation before it was sent to department heads.
It was actually given to the departments today at staff meeting, um, not be, not as a final directive, but more to familiarize the department heads with the new, um, instructions that are part of the GFOA process, that they're, it's the first time they've seen it, so I shared it with department heads, just so they understand the level of information, certainly the select board, uh, you know, can, can rewrite the directive if they like, but I'm, was trying to give them a head start on, um, the new formatting of the budget.
Mark?
Yeah, I, I, I guess my, my concern about what I'm reading here is that if this were to be the final budget directive, it essentially directs our department heads to prepare a, a bud, a deficit budget, as opposed to prepare a balanced budget. And although I know it's kind of a heads up that says, we're gonna have a shortfall of six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, I guess my, my sense would be that, to some degree, our, our CFO already prepared this level, that's how he came up with the fact that it's six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars as a potential deficit in the budget, and so, you know, it seemed to me that our directive to department heads would be that, you know, at this time, preliminary indications are that we've got increases, you know, statutory and contractual increases of six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars that we need to, in, in order to have a budget, come up with a solution for. It's either more revenue or less commensurate expenditure somewhere, and I think that's a part of my concern, is I think we shouldn't be asking our department heads to go through the effort to prepare something that we already know is, is, is not a balanced budget, something we certainly can't take forward. The other thing that I just would like to say is that, that the six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars to me is, is, although a great, uh, and well-developed number, we found that one of the major line items on there, or one of the major components in there is still some, and that was the, the additional energy cost for the high school, was immediately, if you remember, the next day, questioned by the contractors. I don't know if they ever got back to us, if we ever knew what it was, I know Paul Pasterzic didn't come up with that number, it was, it was given to him, and, and I'd hate to have us doing a lot of work based on a, a, a significant component of this that we think is, needs to be refined and, and, and adjusted. And so I think the first thing we need to do is, is follow up with the, with the project group at, at Long Meadow High School and, and the school building committee to see, is that hundred and fifty thousand dollars over, or a hundred and ten thousand dollars, whatever it was of, of additional energy costs, true? And, and, and secondly, you know, decide, rather than have our department heads prepare the line items that are, we know can't go, because it's an unbalanced budget, to come forward and give them some guidance on how to go forward to prepare for us a balanced budget, which could be by, we agree that we're gonna look at, find and seek and, and include added revenue, we're gonna find and include, uh, added reductions.
Alex?
Stephen, I think your approach makes sense, uh, to start with the presumption of a level service budget. The six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars includes a lot of assumptions that we haven't decided upon. Uh, in fact, on this agenda, we have two things that I think the chair would like us to vote on. One is, uh, no operational override, our capitalization stabilization, fund policy, um, there are other assumptions that go into it, OPEB liability, again, I, I think these are important questions that we're gonna be deciding upon, so the way I look at it, I don't think we're necessarily six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars out of balance, 'cause we haven't even prepared the budget, and, you know, there are a lot of things that can change, um, that could allow us to, uh, have a level service budget, and I, and I think that ought to be our goal.
Well, I wanted to say that I, I think Paul wants to come up here, but I wanted to say, I, I like the idea of actually asking the departments to prepare their budget, so we can assess where they are, and they're also warned that there could be a shortfall of six hundred and eighty-three, that number could go up, it could go down, it's, it's a moving target as we go forward, and to, um, I think that the budget instructions and the requirements for the changes in the GFOA, it's gonna be a challenge for the departments, but I think our departments are up to it in realizing that there will be massive changes one way or another, as we get closer to the actual budget. So, um, I, I think that to start with level service is actually another way to assess how the departments are running.
Can I just make a follow-up comment?
Yes.
Part of the, the GFOA best practices that I was researching include establishing a base level budget. And that's how they define base level budget. The, this is just step one in the budgeting process, obviously, we have a long way to go between now and when the budget has to be submitted to the select board, and have it be balanced. Mark, in response to your comment, the last sentence of the directive set, or of that, so, excuse me, of the paragraph about the deficit says, departments are challenged to address their budgetary needs within a limited revenue base for fiscal year fifteen, and are encouraged to identify new revenue sources to help offset their program costs, is that, is it similar to what you were saying, or?
Well, it, it's clearly just, it's one of, you know, there are a lot of additional revenue costs beside what we've challenged department heads in the past to come up with, so, you know, I mean, my, my true concern is that, you know, we may be, need three hundred thousand or four hundred thousand dollars in new revenue, and not somebody's fifty-five thousand dollars kind of number.
Well, I think, like, like I said before, if cuts are gonna be needed, and if the projections hold true, it's help, it, it's important, in fact, it's imperative, to know what would be the baseline for level service, and then what specific things would you be cutting, and what would they be worth? Because that's the, the ultimate, the ultimate, uh, you know, uh, the ultimate equipment we have to balance the budget is by cutting specific services, positions, things like that, or generating additional revenues, um, but a lot of times, revenue projections are, if you're instituting a new source of revenue, you're not sure oftentimes what it's gonna be.
But, but are we asking department heads therefore to prioritize their budget, which is an inverted way of saying, and therefore prioritizing your reductions should we need to? Because a, 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 a level service doesn't ask for any prioritization, it just shows, you know, the library, it shows all the same services in the library, and wouldn't in any way, I don't think, separate a, a different instruct, instruction, say, and what would happen if you needed a five percent, a ten percent, or a twenty percent cut, or a five thousand, twenty thousand, and a hundred thousand dollar, you know, those, if, if that was in there, that would certainly help us and give us guidance on if something needs to be done, we can evaluate what's the library gonna come up with versus what's the DPW gonna come up with versus, you know, some of the other departments in town, but just having level service, it, to me, at this point, doesn't even begin to help you figure out how you, you might, if indeed we've got this A gap, whether it's six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars or less, how you begin to do that. And I, I would just think that, as long as you're giving them budget instructions, why wouldn't we start that, to get them thinking in that mode, first pass?
I, I, again, I think the admonishment from, in the, in that paragraph of the six hundred and eighty, six hundred and, whatever it is, six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars gets them thinking in that mode. The budget pro, as you know, you all know this, the budget process is, after, after they prepare their base level budget, we meet with the departments individually and go through their, their priorities, and then we evaluate them, in terms, we take all the priorities for all the departments and merge them together in what we feel are the priorities for the town, and then that's how those reduction decisions, if necessary, are made, in the context of, what is the overall, what are the overall priorities for the town? And can't, I mean, we can do a directive that asks, I mean, I don't know what, that's, uh, how much, what, what percentage of our overall budget based on fiscal year fourteen is that, I mean, we're, tw- twenty-five million?
Five percent.
The, the six hundred and eighty-three thousand?
Yeah.
Probably about a percent and a half.
Yeah.
But, but of the town side budget, it's probably five percent or something like that.
Yeah, but is the town gonna be fully responsible for the six hundred?
No, but, but, but Paul, my, my sense would be though that if, if we're really doing our job, you know, the, you know, the, the cheap and ea, and easy way is across the board, but the real way to do it is by, based on service, and so some departments may have to look at five times that, where other departments look at maybe adding, if, if, and, and leave it in a down year.
But that exactly speaks, Mark, to why we have the directive structured the way we do, so we're not saying across the board, 'cause I, I agree with you, I think the more effective way is to look at each individual function in, in context of the overall town priorities, um, instead of making an across-the-board cut, if we, but if you give a directive upfront that says, cut everything two percent, then you, then you've already set that process in motion.
But, but I, I, and I, you know, obviously, I, I, I agree with that to some, to some extent, but I think the question comes up, who's making those decisions ultimately, and I think it falls on this board ultimately, to decide whether the, you know, one department gets cut eight percent and another department goes up two percent, versus all the departments go down three percent, or whatever the, the number is, and, and so I, I think it's important for all the departments to be considering, you know, what would, because I have no clue what the impact is of a one percent cut in the library versus a one percent cut in the DPW, and it may be that a one percent cut in the library is absolutely devastating, and we don't wanna do that, but until somebody spells that out for us, and we can evaluate those, you know, it, we, we need to have that ki, kind of an input, and I think the only way to get it is to specifically tell each depart- And I think the only way to get it is to specifically tell each department head to prepare, what would it, what would it look like? Not saying you're going to get it.
That's a town manager role to prepare the budget, Mark, and have those discussions with the department heads. I mean, I want to be clear. And then we present our recommended budget to the select board. Is that how it goes here?
And I-
Not totally.
Okay.
So, and that's the problem.
Which part, which part of it doesn't go that way, though?
That, that, the, preparing the budget and voting on the budget are two different things.
I'm aware.
Yes.
I prepare the budget for select board review and approval.
Okay. Wait, I, I don't believe it's the select board's role to decide what departments are going to be cut and what departments, and how they're going to be cut.
Oh, I disagree, Marie.
I believe that we have to set policies on what we want in the parameters of our budget. Now, when the town manager presents the budget, and this is what happened last year, the town manager presented the budget to us, and then we did make changes to the budget. But we did not make decisions on how the budget was going to come to us. Those changes are when we had the presentation to it in February. And what I have seen happen in past years is we give directives, go out, the budget is created, the town manager works with his departments, and then we have the final say and input in the budget. But I don't believe that we should be, at this point in time, deciding what departments are going to be cut, what percent.
So just as a clarification, if I could, Paul, is, so you're saying that our only vote is a yea or nay on this town manager's budget?
No.
I mean, that's the way it came across.
No, I said, in February is when we get the budget, and then we review the budget, and we see what the stresses are in the budget and see where the shortfalls are, and then we make changes and recommendations. And I remember sitting in February and March and April, working on the budget. But for us, at this point in time, to say, "We want everyone to cut their budget this percentage, we want less out of the library, more out of," I think that's, that is getting too detailed and too hands-on, when I feel we really should be saying things like, "Our policy on the budget is no operational override. This is how we want capital funded. This is what we want some of the things to be emphasized." But I think that the actual detail work would occur later in the year when the budget's before us. Paul?
Paul, does the GFOA new standards have anything to do with your projections and how you calculate them?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. My other question is, have you ever had non-conservative assumptions in your budget analysis?
No.
Thank you. Okay. So I want the board, everybody here, the people so far have said, "Well, it's just a shortfall of 683,000, it's just an assumption." First of all, it's a hell of an assumption at $683,000. And secondly, you're, the members of this board that said, "Well, the assumptions can change," you're indicating that it can only change one way, which is go down, not up. Well, no, that's, that's what's coming off. And secondly, there's a line in here about the planned increases in electricity. And that's a discussion, I think, quite frankly, Stephen, we do need to have, because a couple years ago, the select board wanted to take on the risk of electrical costs in this town, and the school committee rejected it. With the dictum that they can manage this properly and keep it under control. So I do think that's important to have a discussion about that before your budget instructions go out, because I don't see that as a cost that the town should bear because the school committee said that they can manage that two years ago. Secondly, or additionally, maintenance costs, new, increases in maintenance costs for Long Middle High School. I'd like to see a little bit more detail about that because I can't, I can't understand why there would be more maintenance costs if the footprint is the same, the people are the same, we have two less fields that they have to move than they did before the high school went under construction. So I'm not sure what those increased maintenance costs are. I'd just like to get some information. And when you set a baseline, I think, Marie, you said, "Level service tells us what we need." It doesn't tell us what we need, it tells us what we have. And there's a difference between creating a baseline of what we have versus what we need. And have, in this budget instruction, it doesn't say, "Tell us what you need." It says, "Keep the same staffing with the increases in collective bargaining." That's a completely different directive than saying, "Tell us what you need." Now, that, "Tell us what you need" might come out in the discussions, but that's not what this budget directive said. This budget directive says, "Keep everything status quo, even though we see this mountain over here of 683,000, with our conservative assumptions, keep everything status quo, include the COLAs, which we have to do, or collective bargaining agreements, I should say." But it doesn't tell us what we need, it just tells us what we currently have. So that's not, that's not really, in my opinion, of a baseline. It might be a baseline saying, "This is FY '14, that's our, if that's what we want to say, that's our baseline, that FY '14 becomes our baseline, the budget we're in this year." That's fine. But that's not telling people, that's not telling the board or the town manager what we need in our department. So, and I know that's a discussion that comes in afterwards, but I would rather see a budget directive that addresses the shortfall. And I like this, because I would imagine that our colleagues on the school committee are looking at, when they get this, a directive that shows $683,000 in cuts, and when they're part of the, you know, 70, 75% of the budget, I'm sure they're looking at 683,000 and doing some math and saying, "That's about a $400,000 cut to the school budget." You know, and I don't think this addresses it. It's just saying, so how we're going to address this, they come in and then have those discussions. And based on the budget calendar, I'd just like to know where the time is going to come into play with all of those discussions with the, with the school committee and the department heads. And I know the department heads are listed on the budget directive or instructions, but I just don't see us, how you go into a budget directive knowing you're 683 grand in the hole and say, "Show us level service." I just, I don't think that's fair to department heads either, but.
Paul?
First of all, I think Stephen and I both understand that we have to deliver to you folks a balanced budget, and there's no question about that. I, you know, I can appreciate your points about addressing the deficit at this point in time, but right now, we're shooting at a pretty broad, pretty broad target of which to come through, as far as what's going to be coming in on the revenue side, which then equals what the expenditure side is. The one main component of this budget that is a little bit different than in the past is that this baseline budget is due in the early part of December. That's probably a month earlier than we had in the past, that we will have a pretty good indication of where we stand in early December as opposed to that January date. You know, if the address, or the, if they're amended to address maybe a 1% or 2% decrease within the budget instructions that are made now, so be it, but they can certainly be addressed after we, again, have that first draft of that base budget. And as numbers become more evident, and by that, I mean the revenue side, yes, they can certainly, they can certainly change positive or minus, because if the state, right now, we're expecting a level funding from the state, that number could go down. It's, you know, it's hopeful that it's going to go up. But, you know, again, I think because of the time allotted here, we will have a better grasp on the numbers a little bit earlier. And I think the concerns about the cuts that potentially could be made to get to a balanced budget, there is ample time to still address those. Again, Stephen and I are fully aware of, we have to deliver to you folks a balanced budget.
And I think that the select board, if I, if I'm speaking out of turn, let me, we do not want an operational override, and we want a balanced budget.
And I think you're speaking out of turn.
Oh, you-
I haven't, have we had one discussion about that?
Okay. If someone is in support of an operational override-
No, 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 we haven't even had a discussion about that. So you are-
Well, I personally would recommend that we not have an operational override, and I would really like to see a balanced budget come in. I think we, we talked about the stressors on the budget early, so we could see, and the departments can see clearly, the challenges we have coming up. And I know putting in the FOA, GFOA, and requiring the baseline in December, that's going to be an added work for the departments. And I think that the town and the school side realizes that we need to be looking at, unless there's some miracle changes, some big cuts coming up before we get that balanced budget going.
All right.
Yes.
I mean, since you brought up the operational override, I noticed on the agenda, we do have that, it says, "Budget priorities, vote." Were you intending?
I was hoping we would get to a discussion and the vote to that.
Okay, good. I mean, because I think maybe that was just Paul's point, that we ought to be discussing that.
Any other comments on the?
My only comment, additional comment would be, 683,000, if it comes in at 400,000, what dialogue are you having with the school administration about that number? Because you're asking them to come in at level service, and level service is easily misinterpreted, meaning that if they have four kids, for example, and, or 20 kids in the classroom, and two go in to special education, for example, that cost is considered level service. And you're going to have a number that's different in the budget than the baseline. So my question is, what kind of dialogue have you had with the school administration prior to submitting, or submitting this out today?
Well, I think we've had some sharing of numbers. We had the joint meeting, there was joint administrative meeting where they were sharing numbers, and we're going to continue to just have open dialogue on what numbers are coming in, where that 683 is. And as Mark said, some of that, a good portion of that is the utilities that's on the school side. And we also pointed out the issues that we're having with health insurance. When it drops, we're sharing that information. And the most we can have right now is open dialogue, because I think what we saw last year with the school budget is they did a lot of cuts and a lot of additions. So their, their budget's changing as we speak, and their priorities are changing. And so there'll be level service on some things, and they're cutting out other programs, and they're raising services and others.
Is that your answer? Because I asked you the question.
I would say, well, I would agree with Maria's saying, I mean, the school, right now, for the purposes of this phase of the budget, is like any other department, will they be, upon select board approval, they'll be receiving the directive, and we'll engage in the executive team meetings with them like any other department. So I would say, I have had no more or less dialogue with the school department as I had, as I've had with any other department. In terms of what my dialogue will be, I'm just not going to speculate on a hypothetical conversation.
I didn't ask for a hypothetical. I didn't ask for a hypothetical.
You said if.
No, I asked you, what dialogue have you had?
Oh, right.
That's all I asked.
Okay.
I've been quiet. And there's been a lot of good points made. The only point I would make is that to lay a document before us and say that we're, there's a projection of a shortfall of 683,000, I would expect to see some type of back on remediation plan, is if this holds true, what are our steps? Are we going to go hiring freezes? I mean, there should be a, some type of reassurance, I mean, even at this early point, of what are we going to do progressively if this starts to turn into a reality of a shortfall? And that's my, I don't want to belabor it, but normally, if you're going to say something's down, you've got a cure.
I think it would be very helpful, I think, if through this process, we continue to make visible the sources of the increase in expenditures year over year, because if I remember the numbers, with the exception of maintenance, the school, and the electricity, collective bargaining was almost all the rest of it.
Yep.
And, which is contracts which have already been signed and are not necessarily subject to change with the current staffing we have.
I believe Mr. Pasterzik made a statement three or four or five weeks ago that said that it looked like the labor relation costs this year just about totally wiped up to 2.5%.
Sure, when you add up the COLAs, if you want to call them, and what the revenue projected, the only increase that we were expecting during those, the numbers that I presented were from the Prop 2.5 amount, yeah, they basically wiped the increase of revenue just right off the table.
Right. And I think that was a fairly strong statement he was making at that point, because that's, kind of gives you a vision into the future, that we can play with deferred purchasing and all in a limp a couple more years, but that the fact that when he made that statement, it pretty well put a red flag up in front. It said, "We're very close." I know we're pushing no override, and I sort of question how you can make a determination on that for the board to take a vote when we don't know, in fact, if it's going to be required? Because we are still faced with a budget projection of 683,000 down, without a resolution at hand that's been explained to us. So I would, I would refrain from wanting to make a vote that we may have to gobble up later. I think it's premature to make that.
Marie, one of the things that really concerned me is, you know, I think it was a year, early year that I was on the select board, is the prospects of going through tremendous uncertainty and concern of town employees, both on the general government side and the school side, when we may or may not end up in a particular situation. And, you know, what we're talking around here for the last five minutes is, if there's truly a reduction, or truly a projected deficit, whether it's 300,000 or 400,000 or 683,000 or more, $800,000, if we really believe there's going to be no operational override, it's going to impact people. And, you know, there's, because there's no two ways about it, that's the only thing. And, and the sooner we bring more clarity or reduce the uncertainty to that, the better we are for our employees right across the board. I don't know how to do that, but I'd hate to have us waiting till March again, like we did a few years ago. And that's why I think we need to address a, although we're calling it a theoretical shortfall, it's, you know, it's more than theoretical, we've signed the contracts. And unless we do something with the number of bodies we have working for the town and the contracts we've already agreed to, there will be a problem, because we do not have enough money within the 2.5 allotted increase in salary. I'd just like to see us talk about it sooner rather than later. November 4th may be too soon, but March 4th is too late. And that's, you know, I think we've got to do something.
So it's almost going back to Richard's idea of us putting together not just directives, but looking at possible solutions to our issues, maybe have a meeting on that.
It sounded like Mark said the same thing I said.
Yeah.
Again, this is my first, sorry, go ahead, Paul, you first.
No, I was just going to say, I mean, we will have a tighter budget projection once the governor releases his numbers. And we're talking about February 1st. Not only will we have his numbers from the state, who at that point in time will also have seven months' worth of history from the town local receipts, that they could potentially be judged whether they need to be moved upward or downward. I kept in level, because right now, I basically, or at the time that they, the projections were done, I had three months' worth of information, and that's, it's not even, it's nothing to base an opinion on from something that's going to happen 21 months later. So I think, again, the earliest possible time that we're going to see any, any type of major changes on the revenue side will not be until February 1st roughly.
And also, part of these budget directives is asking the departments to look at new sources of revenue and looking at their budgetary needs within the limited revenue base. So we might find that the number is changing, moving with the departments coming forward with information.
Can I just follow up? And I don't want to continue this on, but I guess, this is my first budget for the town, budgeted in other towns. And it is our obligation to deliver to you a balanced budget, shortfall and all. And at that time, we can present the factors that went into balancing that budget. If there's a shortfall, things that were cut, offsets that were made, you know, costs deferred, all those, all those mechanisms by which communities balance their budgets. And once we present the balanced budget and present to you how we got there, that's, I think that's the time that the select board, or I guess I would perceive, based on my experience, that the board then reviews those decisions and perhaps decides to go different ways on certain things and redo some of the priorities. I mean, if there's, if the board approves a goal of no operational override, then we'll deliver a balanced budget with no override. If the board says that an override is an option to maintain level service, then that's a different approach. I mean, I think it's, that's where the goal setting comes in. But ultimately, the decision-making on how to balance the budget, or the decision on making a recommendation on how to balance the budget, is something that we will work with the department heads and present to the select board.
Is there a motion on the floor to approve the budget directions and calendars?
I don't think we have to approve the budget directive.
There we go. Then, moving along, do we, how about a discussion or a vote on a possible budget priorities? Couple of them I had written down, it's just ideas, there's no operational override, and the other is a capital stabilization fund we right now have at 2%. Do we want to keep it at 2%? I know there was discussion last year about making that change, and we were provided with what the current policies are.
I, one thing that I'd like us to take a look at is-
One thing that I'd like us to take a look at is how we're funding capital and what capital projects we're taking on at this time. I mean, we've approved a operational assessment of DPW. And on the heels of the Maple Road project, I'm not sure that, you know, taking on big capital projects is necessarily, this is the time to do it. And so, I guess one of the things that I think we ought to keep in mind is that that two percent, you know, is very much in play. The other thing that I think we need to think about is if we truly believe that DPW is equipped to handle the projects, the capital projects that we've identified, and we think that they do need to be done this year, that whether they, we could have a debt exclusion to fund those capital projects, or at least some of them. And again, that could help us address, you know, this six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar projected shortfall.
I'm sorry.
No, I just want, you know, I think what we need to understand is our capital budget is not, the majority of it is in capital, it's maintenance. And from, you know, replacing lights and so forth, and I don't consider repay the road capital as it's more maintenance and just trying to keep what we have going. I think the issues that we have with whether you fund it through a debt exclusion or you fund it in a budget, the homeowner's still paying for it. So, you didn't solve anything other than spending more money above in certain, literally the two and a half, proposition two and a half. I think what we need to decide is what's the load of the projects that we have in front of us? Separate what's technically routine maintenance or should be considered routine maintenance and take that out of capital and put that money into the maintenance budget and have capital truly be capital, but let it be reflective of the workload. I think one of the things that we've done, and I, you know, we can keep bringing Maple Road up till the cows come home. It doesn't do anything. I mean, there was a screw-up. It's over. It's done. Okay? Anything going forwards on this town manager's head, not on the people that were here before. So, I think by bringing that up, you know, we're not really solving anything. But my concern would be is that by expanding the budget, and I think that capital should be at five percent of the budget, and I think it should be part of the budget as a commitment by the select board and the townspeople to keep the town going. The problem is, my concern is whether or not there is, the backlog will just continue to get greater and whether the staffing that we have at DPW can handle additional workload. That's my concern. And that's not enough, but when you start spending a lot of money on projects, there's only so many people down there that can work on those projects. And from the engineering side of it to the director, and I just don't want to overload them and say that, you know, I have twenty projects on a list and we can only handle ten. And then ten get pushed a year later. I'd just rather us look at what we need to approve that can be handled, I want to say easily, but be handled by our department and overseen by our department and not try to stretch and do twenty projects when the really the best number's thirteen, for example. And I think that's when we need the input of the DPW director and town manager over what's that maximum number that we can utilize or put the stress before we, we just don't, you know, things don't get done, but then we're just going to push off six projects and next year we didn't accomplish anything. I just don't want to overload it. That's what I don't want to do. So, I think the percentage should be based on what we can handle, number one, and then see what those projects cost. And if it's three and a half percent, then it's three and a half. But I think it's got to be greater. I think it's, in my own opinion, it's greater than two percent, but.
Mark?
Yeah, I'm just weighing in on this capital program kind of thing and what's the fair amount of capital to be spending. I think one of the things that we, I will tell you, and I think Richard will, who also is a capital planning chair committee, is that we've never failed to have enough capital projects to spend whatever money was available. And, you know, and I was chair over years when we only had two hundred thousand or three hundred thousand to spend because we were paying off a DPW, or excuse me, a, yeah, the fire department, police department, public safety, safety complex. And then last year, when we increased significantly our allocation to capital projects, primarily road and sidewalk and sewer drainage project, we still had plenty of projects, plenty of projects to go around. So, I think the question isn't how much money we put to it, but really, you know, how much do we want to fairly allocate to it? Because, you know, I really believe that we could increase it by almost a factor of ten every year. And still, we've got the projects to cover it if we needed to. You know, with the staffing call of how to do that separate because we'd have to staff up to do that, you know, I think we need to theoretically decide, it's a triage system. And I know, Richard, you don't like hearing that necessarily. But, you know, you can't do everything you need to, you need to do, so you do the things you must do. And when you're deciding whether you're going to, you know, pay your teachers or pay your employees or pave another road, that's a tough decision to make. And yet, we've got an ongoing obligation, a contractual obligation to pay our teachers and pay our employees. And we don't have an obligation to pave another road. I got to tell you that we got criticized three years ago when we put a, I forgot what the term was, but basically a thin coat on Converse Street. But it saved us millions and millions and millions of dollars. And Converse Street is still holding up. We had some good winners, some lucky winners, but it's better to be lucky sometimes than good. And so, I think we've got to make that decision of what do we need and what do we must have and not what do we want.
Well, some other towns, as an example, have built in a policy of growth. I mean, we could go at two and a half percent and then a policy is that we go up a quarter or a half a percent every year till we reach a target. Another thing is they dedicate certain taxes and funds to capital, such as we could do the meals tax, a bit dedicated to the growth of our capital and infrastructure. Another thing that's done is any, when you have free cash, a certain percentage, if it goes over three hundred thousand in free cash, a certain percentage goes towards capital, not just the stabilization fund. So, there are different ways we could look to build into the budgeting process of growth in our capital expenditures.
Yeah, I mean, I'm willing to do that, Marie. And last year, if you recall, I proposed a plan where we increased it, we actually, from two percent, up to, I think, three and a half percent, using that money for actually for paying off a bond so we could get a lot of money up front rather than projects. The point, though, still is, if you increase, you know, one percent of, give or take, it's now forty, four hundred ninety thousand dollars, I think, probably one percent or something, or four hundred forty thousand dollars.
So, it's a little over five, one percent is a little over five hundred thousand.
Okay. So, you know, so it's a significant amount of money for capital, but it's also a significant amount of money to take out of your operating budget to try to allocate for capital. I mean, you know, we're talking about a quote-unquote six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar deficit. A one percent increase, you know, bumps that up another five hundred thousand dollars that we'd have to deal. So, it's nice to say we're going to increase our allocation to capital, but unless we've got a place for that either new income to come from or where to take the revenue out of, it's going to be tough to do.
What, do you feel comfortable with saying two percent plus meals tax? Anything we get from meals tax is growing now?
Our meals tax is already built into our budget. It already goes into the general fund and it's already been allocated as part of our expenditures, I mean.
Alex?
I mean, I guess the, one of the things that we learned during our joint meeting is that we have a low level of debt. And my understanding is this is a relatively good time to be funding long-term projects. Interest rates are low. One resident was talking to me a few months ago, sort of thinking about it from a business standpoint. Business, you know, you would take on all sorts of capital projects and fund them through cheap debt. So, the concern that I have with two percent and then progressively going up in sort of this lockstep fashion is, to me, what it sounds like is our town services get worse every year. If all the other factors stay the same, our schools get worse every year. It's not just that you're hitting, you know, the seniors and you're hitting the kids one year. You're setting in a dynamic that you're going to happen, is going to happen every year. And again, I still have this concern that maybe we're not prepared to deal with this, you know, with an influx of money. You know, when the question of DPW's operational performance is still in question.
Richard?
Go ahead, Mark. And then I'll try.
So, I want to switch the thinking back to, so what we really need to do is not cut our way to, cut our way to balanced budget, but increase our revenue. We'll find a breakthrough cost reduction program that had been on our list for years that will make a difference. Buy the streetlights. Save ourselves four hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year by buying our streetlights. Get off of our rear ends and buy the streetlights. Four hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. That's what it was worth to us four years ago. You know, come up with the revenue things we say we're going to do and we never do. Go out and put in a wireless system, bid it out and see what its revenue is worth. If the meals tax is worth eighty thousand or eighty-five thousand dollars a year to us, maybe our own wireless system is worth three times that. I mean, you can't just continue to cut in the town along Meadow. We can't continue to just raise people's taxes. There are alternatives. You know, plenty of towns are buying their streetlights. We're not inventing the wheel. We know what it takes to do it. If we had done it four years ago, we'd probably be better off, but we were fighting with Wamiko at the time. Start now and if it takes four years, at least four years ago, from now, we're not still fighting with it. If we've got new revenue sources, let's do it.
Can you give an example of what we've cut over the last four years? We still can't keep cutting in Long Meadow, so I just, because our budget somehow goes up and not down.
You're right. No, you're right, Paul. I mean, we have, we're talking about cutting. And we can't just talk about cutting.
Richard?
I don't know where to start. The issue is a lot larger than you're going to accomplish at this meeting. Our debt on our infrastructure is not going down. It's going up. It's going up at a nonlinear rate. Mark and I specifically know that with all the time that we spent on capital. The most difficult thing I think that we have going on in town is that we have never had enough money to put into the program, to allow the program to settle down and mature. If you look back at the funding history, this goes all over the map. And it's almost impossible, say, for an engineering services to build up and staff and have the expertise to function if these totals are going up and down like this because they've got the gear in. They should have the money a year, two years in advance and do their A and E design, to get their design work up, to get ready for the contracts. You know, all the concerns we've had on the DPW, which I don't totally agree with, there will be mistakes in the best construction there is. And there are mistakes that are made, too. But we can go contractual services out for A and E services. We can have project managers that run our contract services. You build them right into the contract for your tip programs and all that. So, these things can be solved. What we haven't solved is recognizing the fact that we can put a two to four hundred million dollar figure on that bulletin board right back there right now and we say, "We know that it's that much. How are we going to fund it?" And the reason we can't is because it's almost, we're almost incapable of figuring out how to fund that much money. And that is the crucial, crucial problem that we're faced. But we can't keep giving it lip service every year because it's not going to go away. It is definitely increasing. Marie, you and I both witnessed to, at that last conference, we're at two very successful communities that have had a kind of a different approach than we took. And they set aside, like one community set two million dollars in their asphalt program several years ago. And they are now two to three years away from having an asphalt program that is down to routine maintenance. They took, both communities, took their tax money from the meals tax and put it right into their roads program and their sidewalk program. Lock, stock and barrel. Didn't even consider any other place because they knew that was their major deficiencies. So, they're doing some innovative things, but they've done it through sacrifice. And we have not made that sacrifice. Like Mark mentioned, at one time, how many years, Mark, was it less than two hundred thousand dollars in the capital program? Because we took capital funds and we were paying off a fire station improvement. And the decision may have been okay for the fire station, but it really raised out with the infrastructure repairs. Because they're growing out there. They're not stopping. They're not waiting on us. So, the discussion's a lot larger than we're doing right here. And it's not an easy fix, but you know you need more money. We aren't, we're not even putting close to how much money we need to have put away to take care of a billion-dollar resource. And that's, I think, is what the latest figures were on what we have in this town is a billion-dollar resource. And we said before, I had a paper out that says, "Two to four percent industry standards of what the revenue cost is is what you should have to maintain it." And that's a staggering sum. That's twenty to forty million dollars a year to maintain a resource. Well, when you stop and look where we're at right now, our asphalt program alone is thirty-five, forty million down right now. Quantifiable, verifiable, on the books. Right now, you can't walk away from it.
Well, I know that if we go even at two and a half percent, that's just nibbling. It's just nibbling. But I feel like we need to start making a commitment to have this grow in some sort of systematic policy. And I know that another discussion will be how we can increase revenues, and we need to do that. And we could do that the next meeting, or solutions on how to cuts. But I was wondering if we had a motion on the floor on what number we're going to aim. I mean, capital planning needs to know what they're aiming for. The budget needs to know what commitment we're making to capital funding this year. Is there an opinion on the board on where we feel we comfortable starting out this year?
I'd still like to know what we need done. And I don't mean that, I know Stephen could bring this list of fifteen projects right now that need to be done. I think we need to understand what those projects are, why they're important, before you decide a percentage. Because if that number for those fifteen projects is six percent of the budget, for example, then we might say, gee, we can't do that. Or we might say, that actually is a commitment. I think what we really got to stop looking at and say, because we have starved capital, and not just for the fire station and police station. We cut capital to fund the budget, of which seventy-five percent went over to the schools. It was cut purposely to make sure that we didn't have cuts in our staffing for years, so, for at least three years. So, I think, I would rather see a presentation made to us and say, "Here's the projects we think we can do in two thousand and fifteen budget. Here's what the cost is," and then come up with a number. Because I don't, I mean, if we just say two and a half percent and, you know, the meals tax, I understand that one town dedicated, it's eighty grand. That doesn't even do the sidewalks. So, you know, it would help a little bit, but it doesn't, it's not going to do the pavement or the sidewalk. So, I'd just rather have us look at what the need is and then educate the townspeople about what the need is and why they need to approve it at town meeting. I think that's the most important thing. I think just to pick a number arbitrarily isn't going to get us anywhere closer. As Richard said, the issue isn't, do we have enough projects? The issue is, how do we, we're just falling behind every day. We're not gaining, we're not even treading water. We're just slowly sinking, infrastructure-wise. And, you know, the project that, you know, you see on Williams and Merryweather, it's just, that's a tip. That's a, that's a, that's a little project that's seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That's nothing. I mean, we have four-inch water maze. I mean, we know our fire department makes adjustment for that. They should probably already be replacing. That's a twenty million dollar project. And we're never even going to look at that in toto because we're going to be afraid to say, "We need twenty million bucks." But again, I would rather us not pick a number, say, "What's the need? What can reasonably be done next year?" And then look at and see if that's a number we can tackle. And if it isn't, then we maybe we look at part of it as through the budget and part of it through debt exclusion. Or we sell it.
I think we need to start with a number because I think we've seen the book of thirteen through two thousand and seventeen. Richard did a phenomenal presentation that showed the tremendous amount of infrastructure where we really are behind. And we can't even get to the point of programmatic management of our infrastructure yet because we're still trying to do such major catch-up. I would like us to get policies in place to just start moving in the right direction of increasing our funding at capital stabilization. And when we review the projects, which we will be doing in January, we also should start really pushing towards more tip money. Richard, we brought up some fantastic ideas today. And push towards getting grants, push towards, and that's something that we as a board can really start doing a little bit more, talking to our legislative delegation.
I had one question. We, I wonder if it'd be any benefit, we know the information's out there. There's no other person in this room that does, not aware that we've got a lot of engineering studies. Would it be beneficial for us to have a committee put together and do a briefing and bring into this board and really lay it out as thoroughly as they can? With recommendations, you know, with the finance people there, with recommendations on what is a long-term financing solution for this? Because bless our hearts, we keep beating this issue up, but we're not getting any place. Because I don't think we've been given programs before us to analyze, seriously. We give it ten minutes here and ten minutes there, but we're not giving them a thorough look at this thing.
Well, I don't see a commitment from the board to even go up two point five. And what you're looking at is probably six or seven or ten percent.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I agree, but I wonder if we just haven't had enough information brought before us in a cohesive fashion. And I think that's what we're lacking, because I, there's not a person here that doesn't realize that we have problems in infrastructure.
Richard, I think that's the, that's the starting point, is there's not a person here, and I'd venture to say nobody who's involved in town government, who doesn't agree we have an issue with capital needs. So rather than focus on, you know, what projects do we need, and is the number 160 or is it 195 or is it 220? It's big and it's out there.
It's big.
I'd rather focus on, how the heck are we going to finance 40, 60, or 80 million? You know, we're not going to finance 240, which is probably closer to where our needs are. Why don't we spend some time figuring out the financing and then prioritize the projects around whatever financing we can, we can put our arms around? Because I don't think we can put our arms around the 220. I don't think it's worth coming in here and parading $220 million worth of capital projects. I'd rather say, now that we know we can put our hands around financing 40, let's get the top $40 million, and maybe, and we can't do anything more than till four years from then when we can finance, whatever it is. So I think the finance plan ought to lead the project plan. Like I said before, we've got plenty of projects.
Well, should we ask the finance committee to make a recommendation?
Wow. Imagine that.
We have professionals in town, one including our town manager, who has a capital, works with the capital planning committee. You have a capital planning working group, I'm assuming, is still intact and so forth. I would hope that, Richard, that our town manager and our DPW director would bring that prioritization to us and say, and have that mean to educate us and say, here's all the studies we've done, here's some updates on those studies. I would hate to see something get lost in a committee. And again, you know, and quite frankly, the last thing we need is another committee to come in and advocate specifically for one project, which is capital. I think that's what the administration should be doing, to advocate to this board about what needs to be funded.
Stephen?
I appreciate that comment, Paul. Thank you. And I would say, you know, there is a lot of information out there. There's a very mature capital planning process in this community, going back many years and looking ahead five years, and we are engaged in the next annual renewal of the five-year plan. And that's just, it's just starting now in accordance with the budget calendar that you have before you. But this is something that Paul and I have talked about. The board has a policy that says 2%. And the reason why I think it's, it was a good idea for the board to put that policy in, and why it's a good idea to have a policy, is that you know each year you've made a commitment to, of that amount, to do capital, to do infrastructure work.
Just a correction, Stephen, it's all capital. It's not just infrastructure.
It's all capital. So it could be, you know, any capital expense.
It's snowplows and it's, remember, we did a paper folder when the town needed to send out their mail, their bills.
Right, any capital expense, of which there are many hundreds. So I think the point of putting this on the agenda is to show that, and this is a, you know, does the tail wag the dog? If we leave it to each year going over how many projects we have versus what can we afford, it's going to be the same project every single year, or it's going to be the same debate every single year. Whereas if we feel that the 2% has not been sufficient and created a backlog of infrastructure, then the percentage should be adjusted, because the policy is what dictates the development of the budgets. And so, to your point, Richard, the select board should have a debate about the capital stabilization fund policy, which is 2%. And, you know, entertain the idea of, is it 2%? Is it 4%? Is it 2.5%? Whatever that number is, I think there is sufficient information out there to be able to inform that debate. I will say this, there are, the volume of projects that can be done is a concern, but not because of competency, it's simply because there's a finite amount of work that a group of people can do. And I reject as strongly as I possibly can the characterization that one project that went poorly is indictment of a long history of performance on many, many things besides street construction by DPW. And I'd also note, that was a contractor oversight issue, which is a problem, but not the failing of the individuals that actually perform the work, like keeping your street plowed and your water coming to your house and clean. So, and even though Merryweather was an inexpensive project, it was by far the deepest excavation project we've ever had, one of the deepest that our town engineers worked at all places has ever seen. And, yeah, we did have some hiccups, some issues with the gas main during the construction, but over what is a very short construction season, the project, the pipe is all in the ground, and they will be restoring the site, moving the dirt back around, removing equipment and restoring the site. And then next spring, they'll do the final coat of paving, and I don't know if they plant a loman seed this winter yet, but they will do the landscaping and making sure everything's put back together, punch list items. That was an exceptionally complicated project. It's done, for the most part, like I said, the pipe is on the ground, and it is not, we are not at our November 15 shutdown date yet. So I'm proud of the way the department oversaw that project and worked with the contractor to make sure that even though we hit snags and there were imperfections, it didn't, we did not have another Maple Road situation. And I will say, that is on me.
Well, I think-
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I hope you, Mike, when I mentioned Merryweather and Williams, I meant, I was helping with that project.
No, I took it that way. I'm just saying, I'm just saying that I'm proud of how that's turned out.
I think it's important that we, we are a policymaking board. I think it's important that we do decide if we really have, and I've heard this on this board, a commitment to increase the capital investment, that we raise it above the 2%. Whenever we, I go to budget with my kids, I say, I know it's really hard to save, but put the $100 in this savings account before you do anything else. If we wait to the end to see what's available at the end of our budget, it's going to be all gone. And I would like to see us increase that percentage.
You know, just to follow up on something that Mark said, and I think Richard has said, I think it makes sense to look at this big number, because the, this five-year plan that we're re-upping, I mean, that's only a very small percentage of all of our capital needs. And the other thing that I think we're really missing, and I think we talked about this in our meeting at the community house in August, when it was really hot and noisy, and nobody was watching.
They missed an exciting meeting.
Yes, they did. It was, it was, it was quite something. You know, we can talk about financing, but what we really need to also talk about is political consensus. I mean, one of the things that we've voted on, I didn't vote for, but, I mean, is this DPW site, $20 million. I mean, that's, that's one thing, right? And I think the only way you're going to have a political consensus is to get everybody on board, kind of like what Barry Del Castillo said last March, a joint capital planning committee. So that you, so whatever decision is made has buy-in from the school committee, the finance committee, the select board. You know, you, to do, to do big projects like that, to get people to commit, to get the voters to commit to it, because whatever we say is subject to the, what town meeting and the voters say, is not going to get done unless, not just that people are tolerating these things going forward, but getting behind it. And I don't see how you, you create that political consensus, I don't see how you get the town leaders together unless you have that kind of process, that's looking at all of the projects together.
I just want to make one correction. I'm not expecting a $20 million DPW.
Yeah, I don't know where that number came from. We don't even know what the thing would be.
Yes, nowhere near.
That's ours.
Nowhere near. Figure, he's used that several times. I don't know where you got it from. I mean, I was looking at the materials that we were-
From tying bonds?
Yeah. And when you add in new site, dealing with the old site, all of the buying the land, all those things, I mean, you're inching up toward $20 million. I mean, I hope, you know, I hope it's not that much, and I question whether that much is necessary or is a sufficient priority. But I mean, but I'm not making that up.
I mean, we want to make sure the projects are all popular enough. And I think I'd say this, the charter dictates how the capital planning process goes, and we have, we are going to, on the 19th of November, have, for the first time, I think, kind of informal capital working group. But then the charter's clear, the capital plan gets delivered from the town manager to the capital planning committee. And if we want to change the charter to incorporate the membership or doing any of that other stuff, that's certainly a good point.
Let's move, Richard?
Right. But the charter doesn't say what the capital planning committee will be made up from it. He was talking about the makeup of the committee. Are you proposing, are you floating a motion? Is there a motion on the table for the 2.5%?
Traditionally, I'm not supposed to make a motion, but I'm really asking for the, for us to come up with a policy to increase it above the 2%. Whether someone feels comfortable, 2.25, 2.5, 3, 4. Last year, we dedicated 4%. I think that's what it ended up being when we finished with all of it. I think it would be nice to be able to tell capital planning and our town manager what our directive is, or our priority or goal when it comes to this, and then it becomes a commitment to the budget the following year and the following year.
You know, the capital, capital planning is a little bit more than just, we're going to refinish more roads and sidewalks. I mean, and so, you know, I'd be reluctant to increase it above, first of all, because we're just talking about the $683,000 that we think we need, and now we're saying, well, let's take that and bump it up to a million bucks, because what the heck? You know, we can do that. But I don't, you know, I'm, I'd be reluctant to increase it right now, only because, unless we decide, is that extra money going into roads, into sidewalks, into drainage, into guardrails, or into vehicles around, down at the DPW? So until we know what the capital needs are, I think, you know, if we're talking about November 19th and you're going to have a preliminary capital budget, we're going to be able to look and say, you know what, you know, $900,000, which I think is the name, number, $950,000 this year, a million?
It's a million one that's in the FY '15 budget.
Okay, so a million, if you say a million one, doesn't even begin to scratch the surface of what Stephen's come up with for high priorities, then we can talk about it. But if a million one covers the really, really high priorities, I doubt we will. But, you know, then, so I think we wait for the decision.
Okay.
Marie, can I just, you know, first of all, just so everybody understands that capital planning expenditures would go up under the proposed budget because of the 2.5% increase. So it already went up 2.5% of the 950,000, 970,000.
The percentage is based on.
Secondly, is that we have a lot of projects that went out to bid that came in under budget. And I think the number is anywhere between 300 and $500,000. So there's additional dollars there that go back into capital planning.
They were bonded, though, Paul.
Those were bonded?
Yeah, the big ones were bonded, and so we just bonded less.
The one that I'm thinking of, the Merryweather one that came in $150,000, $150,000 under, we have not bonded yet. We, you know, we're thinking about bonding in the spring for that. But we are using what we had, we said, we set aside money from an appropriation, we set aside money from reserve. We're using those monies first before we hit the bonding amount.
Did we, when we went to town meeting, we attempted to, that was, that article was to bond it?
There were, there were three sources of revenue. One was to raise and appropriate $300,000 roughly, one was $353 from the employee benefit stabilization fund, and the remainder was to bond that project.
So about $100,000 then or something? Seven, six, $150,000, okay.
Right.
But there's the, there's a project that we haven't even started, that Laurel Project, or I think it was Barrington Road. So I would, I would look first to see what we have access in projects that are, because that number's significant.
But we don't even have a policy, do we, that if it comes under budget, that it goes into capital?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We do, so it stays in capital, doesn't go to free cash.
The motions, we started six years ago, the motions in town meeting is, unspent money will be returned to the capital stabilization fund. So if, you know, if it's to be paid for by the capital stabilization fund, it comes under. I guess, Paul, the interesting question is, when we said we were going to pay for that project, we essentially said, the Merryweather to Wilkens project, essentially said, we're going to bond the difference between the other two, anything above the other two. So the, so the, coming out of capital stabilization and coming out of the raise and appropriate was different from, you know, so we just bonded less, which is ultimately saves some-
Right, saves money to our-
And I don't understand why we wouldn't look at the town manager when they go through the capital planning process and say, what are the top priorities? Because of the top priorities of capital planning total $700,000, which I don't think, but if they totaled $700,000, why would we allocate more? And again, my other concern is, if you raise it without knowing what projects could actually be handled next year, we're going to end up, our Laurel Street project is not going to be done until the spring. Okay? So, you know, those are the, and then if you add more projects on top of that one, are we then going to overwhelm DPW? My, I really think you need to look at, what is the need? What can be handled by the, by the staff we have? And then find out what that dollar amount is. And I don't think that's unfair, because capital planning is going to look at every project presented to them by the town manager and rank them. Or else that's what we should have from them. And then that, there's going to be, there's multimillion dollars, more than 2%, I would imagine, in the proposed capital plan and go into, a capital plan going to the capital planning committee to look at. There's more than 1.1 million, I would imagine.
I disagree. I think that we listened at MMA, town after town after town, said, you, they're aiming towards 4% and 5% these days. We are stuck at 2%, and I don't think we push to have it where, let's argue over this in the spring and see where the numbers are. We never make the commitment as high as we should.
I'm not saying argue in spring.
So that's, that's what concerns me.
Because other towns are going to 4% or 5%, our number might be 7% or 8%.
But we're not even going up to 2.5, so.
Tell me what we can handle. So if you, if you go up to 2.5 and it puts another half a million dollars into the budget for capital planning, can the DPW handle another half a million dollars worth of projects with the load they already have? And then, so you don't even, we don't even know that, so why go through the, again, that's going to be part of the budget instruction, to go through it, and then have it come back and say, no, it's actually, we're going to prove as 1.7% instead of 2.5, because the workload would just be too much for our staff to handle. So we don't, we don't even know what the capacity is that our DPW can handle reasonably. And, you know, that, my only point with the Williams and Merryweather project was challenging. That was my point, and we-
Oh, no, I didn't think that was a project.
Yeah, no, no, no. So the next big project will be just as challenging, might not be as deep, but there's going to be some other issue, there's going to be some other 80-year-old, 100-year-old pipe in the ground that we're not going to anticipate breaking and so forth. So we really got to make sure that we have the capacity to handle it before we start awarding. And I agree, you know, one of the things, and Mark made the point, he's dead on, we have a $683,000 deficit, but we want to increase capital planning spending, without knowing what the impact of the budget's going to be. Because, and if you want to have that no operational override vote, well, the other half a percent, the other half a million's coming out of something, or quarter a million.
Well, I'm going to move on, because obviously, there's, there's no movement on the board to increase our investment in capital.
And I have one question I'd like to make, one statement. And Paul, you're talking about the capacity, and I agree, there is a capacity thing, but in contracting, you can get around capacity, because you can A and E the whole thing. We can do project management. If you gave me $5 million-
What does A and E mean?
An architectural engineering firm. They develop the specifications, they come in and do project management, and they take the whole project, and we just have phone calls with them. So we can do it. It doesn't have to be done with in-house staff.
And that would be great to know, Richard. That's all I'm saying.
But it's, it's like it's a catch-22, because they can't get to that point of telling us that they can't do it, because we don't give them the money to tell us we can't do it. And we're in that limbo, and we won't, we can't move forward, because we don't seem to think we got the capacity. But these answers are easy, they're simple things. There's no way that they can't spend millions and millions of dollars, even if it's not to their own services. Seriously, and they can get professional farms to come in and handle these contracts.
Right, so that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I just wanna say, because I, I agree with a lot of what you said, Paul, and actually, all of you have made good points on this, and I think that speaks to the need for a fuller debate on the percentage, and revising the policy or not, depending on what the role of the board is. But, you know, my final comment on it is, there is value in planning to predictability, and having a percentage that is sufficient and set in policy, that, you know, gives the predictability to plan projects and align priorities based on the predictable available funds.
Okay, so moving off of capital, is there any belief on the board that we want to vote that we're asking a priority of the budget that we don't consider an operational override? Or do we want to wait and see how things go?
I, I would think we have to wait until we see how things go.
Okay, so we don't have any?
That would be my, that would be my recommendation.
Marie, I think, I think you asked a rhetorical question. I don't think there's anybody in the town of Long Meadow who prefers an operation, well, I shouldn't say that. I think there are very few people in the town of Long Meadow who prefer an operational override to not having one. The question is, what do you give up if you, if you, down the road, if you, if you don't have one, and what do you get if you end up having one? But why would we go in there right now saying, by gosh, we'll never have a, and, and I absolutely despise the idea of having, but I could, to say, we absolutely won't do it, you know, we're not shutting down two schools, and we're not shutting, you know, and I want my streets plowed, so I don't know what I'd give up, so I'm not prepared to say that here.
But see, what I said here is budget priorities means, means they're goals that we're giving the town manager when he goes to work with the departments. And one of the goals, I thought, would be no operational override, and the other is to increase the capital stabilization fund policy. But I guess we're gonna leave a free hand to what we feel is possible.
But I don't think the town manager has a, has a free hand to come back and say, I balanced your budget with a twelve million dollar operational, two and a half override. I mean, you're, that, that's not in, that's not part of the allowable cards, right?
Well, it could be, you know, for, if you wanna be former town manager.
If you wanna be former town manager, right.
No, I, I agree, I mean, I, I do think there's value in saying, for the, I do think there's value in the board saying, here is our goal. I think it's clear, I agree with you, Mark, no one wants that. And, and I want, and actually, in the next, under manager's report, I'm gonna, I'll talk about the pressure on Prop two and a half, which you guys all know about, but I'll leave at that.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, we understand the mandate to deliver a balanced budget. What we'll do is, is what we've done last year, is we will issue what, tell you what the cuts were, what we're proposing, from the town manager's budget, it's gonna be in your hands afterwards to make the corrections for the select board's budget, that'll be printed, so.
Now, let's move on, then, to holiday trash amnesty program consideration.
Very brief memo in your packet, apparently, this is new for me, but it's the gift that keeps on giving for town residents. And I recommend that the select board grant the holiday waste amnesty from December twenty-sixth to January eighth, which would allow one extra bag of trash per household per week, which means that, instead of putting out your one thirty-gallon container with, or trash bag, and then any supplemental trash in a blue town bag, you could put two of your store-bought trash bags out during those two weeks, no charge.
I'm not sure that's what you really meant.
It's two containers.
Two containers.
Well, two, two containers, but, but the, the, the containers, the trash inside the container has to be bagged, and it's a thirty-gallon container, so.
You could literally put out two thirty-gallon containers, you could put out five thirty-gallon containers, in fact, under the amnesty plan, I thought.
I, I think it was one extra, it's, the way it's worded, here's one extra bag.
I move that we approve the, the trash amnesty program, and, as recommended by the town manager.
Second.
Just from a point of discussion, I had actually a discussion with Stephen about this, because our, our solid waste recycling budget is in deficit, our budget is in deficit, and, but if you look at the, the December and January numbers, and I recognize that they're not always that good, but, because you have to look at the number of weeks in the, in the year and that kind of stuff. But, you know, we don't actually run that big an increase in the, what I'll call tipping fees, which is the amount of material we actually dispose of in December and January when we go through this, relative to even September and October. So it's not like that, that we're, you know, we're, we're telling everybody, yeah, you got an amnesty, and by the way, it's costing us a ton of money. I think the num, the, the numbers are fairly, fairly small, there's, you know, talking about the cost of this being a couple thousand bucks rather than tens of thousands.
Yes.
I think this point has been raised before, years past, but it does seem that a lot of the boxes and wrapping paper and that sort of thing, that does, is actually recyclable. And, I mean, I, I think it is, and, and a policy of this town, in fact, we encourage recycling, we want to have as much recycling as possible. I mean, you know, it's one thing to give people amnesty, I, because they have more trash during a particular period of time, seems like we ought to be also encouraging people to recycle. I'm not sure what this policy really does to do that.
Marie, can I, I just wanna, one point that Mark made, our, our solid waste recycling is not in deficit because of increase in trash, it's not in deficit, it's in deficit because of increase in wages, and, and within the system, and costs within the system, not because the residents are recycling less, and actually, we're throwing away less trash right now. The recycling doesn't go away, and I, and I, and quite frankly, if you don't want to vote for it, don't vote for it, this is something we've done every year, I think, for the last, I think, from my time on the board, since, actually, before we got on the board, when we started charging people for trash, because we took that money and took, and put it into the budget, we didn't save it, we actually just charged people more to dispose of their, of their waste. And the recycling has gone through the roof in this town. And, and so, that's, that's part of our issue, is that there's only so much more Long Meadow can recycle. And I, and I think if you look historically back at the numbers of trash and recycling during this, this hiatus or amnesty, you will see that recycling actually goes up as opposed more, more than the trash goes up.
Well, actually, Paul, I've got the numbers, and you're exactly right, the trash, recycling goes up twenty percent, and the, and the trash goes up about five or eight percent.
So the reality is, we're making more money on the recyclables, and it's costing us to haul the trash away during that time. So I think we should have amnesty fifty-two weeks out of the year, the way it sounds, it sounds like it's a winner.
All right, any other discussion?
I'm ready to vote.
All those in favor?
Aye. And thank you for sourcing me, that's, I appreciate it.
Town manager reports.
You guys make a good team down there, by the way.
Yeah, I got all the numbers.
He's got all the files, I.
You need to be connected to the whiteboard. From now on, we'll always have you connected, Mark.
I did give an update on the Meriwether project, somewhat on the stump there, but it had, they have finished putting in all the drainage, that's a big, big milestone, and they will be focusing on putting the site back together. It looks like the weather over the next couple of weeks, or at least the rest of this week, is gonna be favorable for doing that. They did commence work on the Barrington Road, the Barr, it's really Barrington and Chestnut, a water main, that has gone in fairly well, they've put down a lot of main. We had said that the, part of that project that intersects with. The part of that project that intersects with Long Meadow Street, which would require cutting into Long Meadow Street, we said that that's a no-go for this year, it'll be next year for sure. But we did say, you know, as I, I think I talked about, we did say, by taking advantage of, like I said, what is a finite construction season, we were able to get some work done this fall successfully, that makes it so Laurel Street can start earlier in the spring. And that's important, because, I think, as I've noticed, the cul, the Cooley Brook Culver, which is right by Englewood, off Edgewood?
Between Edgewood and Warren.
Between, I, I always confuse Englewood and Edgewood.
Oh, go see the houses, there's, you won't confuse.
Between Edgewood and Warren, we'll be going, we, we learned from the Secretary of Transportation today, that that'll be bid in January, and it would be pretty bad if Long Meadow Street and Laurel Street were torn up at the same time, so we wanna make sure we get out the door on Laurel Street as soon as possible in the springtime, and getting all this work done in Barrington will, will help, because it's the same contractor, it'll help make that possible. In terms of the update for.
Can I just ask, did we, is there something written in terms of your town report?
No.
Okay.
In terms of, in town management, I, I did, I did submit a memo that I received from the CFO, and I'm going to ask him to chime in on a historical perspective, but, and I know this is just wonderful landing in the context of the budget director discussion and projected deficit. But now that almost all of the, four out of the five collective bargaining agreements are done, and our personnel costs going forward through, really fiscal year 2016, for those four agreements, non-school, are known, excuse me, it's, you know, it's that annual consideration of a cost of living adjustment for non-represented employees, and you have the list there in front of you, but I'll go through some, it's crossing guards, police dispatchers, recycling center personnel, department heads and assistants, and a few other exempt employees, exempt meaning not represented by a bargaining unit. Temporarily seasonal staff, you know, some DPW interns, some reserve police officers, things like that. A one percent cost of, and I wish, I do not believe it includes me, because of, I, I have a separate contract. Or I, in, in terms of some, the department heads are covered by contract, whether or not it applies to them is governed by their specific agreement. Paul does lay out some historical perspective, a one percent cost of living is about thirty thousand dollars for the groups. They were included in special, FY fourteen, thirteen or fourteen were included. And so I think the recommendation is, we'd like to build a plan for the, for the, the group that we're mentioning, a fiscal year fourteen COLA, and then also approve, or ask for approval of the fiscal year fifteen COLA, so we can plan that in the budget now versus waiting for a special appropriation. Typically, they have followed the cost of living adjustments for the clerical unit, the collective bargaining unit for the, that represents the clerical employees. Those employees will receive a one and a half percent COLA and a three percent COLA for those two years. So we're asking for the same for the personnel identified in the memo. The one thing I do want to say about this, because I, I don't want to pretend like I didn't just hear the whole conversation about the deficit, is that, one of the reasons, and I think everyone here knows this, Long Meadow, because it's largely built out, does not get great new growth year to year. And so I think one of the reas, one of the ways a lot, you know, other towns who have good economic assets, one of the reas, one of the ways they are able to outpace Prop two and a half and avoid kind of dreaded moments, is because they get good new growth, or some communities have a, have a split tax rate, and they have, they have great revenue from their commercial tax base. Long Meadow is single tax rate, largely residential, and for the most part, built out, so we don't generate new growth. So even though I am new, it seems to me, looking back and talking to Paul, that, you know, the reason why we are up against the cap every year is not because of inefficiency or profligate spending, it is really more costs, many of which are beyond the town's control, have just gone up more than two and a half percent a year. And so I think the town has done well, and I think the department heads and really the non, and all the town employees have done well to continue to keep us operating, for the most part, at a level, at a, at the same level, within that Prop two and a half cap. The reason why I think this is important is because some of these employees, you know, don't really receive much in the way of other benefits. We have had a difficult time retaining and attracting crossing guards, and I think that's a, it's an important program to people, but it's not a great job, it doesn't pay very well, and, but it is, it is an important job, and so we think that, that's one group, and similarly, recycling center, I mean, there are a lot of jobs just aren't really great for people, and they're not willing to, you know, take what we have to offer. And so certainly, a cost of living adjustment, although minor, would certainly be something to reward the people that have hung in there with it, and hopefully attract people who will stay with it for longer. In terms of the department heads, since I've been here, I've, my experience with the department heads has been that they are just a tremendously professional, competent group of people to work with. They're also a lot of fun, and I, I believe that a, a cost of living adjustment is warranted simply based on the value that each of them brings to the town. Beyond that, I would say, if difficult recommendations need to be made, it is these people that we're gonna rely on to make those recommendations, and then also have to continue to run their departments in the aftermath of any kind of, of decisions that are made if cuts are needed. So I'm hoping, well, now I will, I'm hoping that the select board will consider this, and, you know, at this point, I would look to Paul to see if he has anything to add.
I think he said it all, I'm just, it helps out tremendously in, in the, in the budget building process, if we can get the FY fifteen cost of living built in and settled, you know, right now, we're going back, having to reconstruct FY fourteen budgets for collective bargaining agreements that were just signed recently. It's a lot of extra work when you compound that with the retro calculations and things of that nature. We've done that over the last couple of years, because these historically have been behind in the whole process, and we just want to get a little bit ahead and not have to go through the process a year from now, if it is delayed.
Is there a motion on the floor to accept the recommendations of the town manager?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure. It's usually, if we don't have it on, or you're not sure if we want to put a motion on.
Right, I mean, I'm trying to understand what exactly is being proposed. So, so I, so if we adopt this, this would be folded in to this coming year's budget process?
It would be, it'd take effect, the one and a half percent would take effect for this current year we're in. We've delayed instituting a cost of living adjustment until we had gone through the collective bargaining process, because the wages that were obligated to pay by contract are obviously, to some extent, take precedence, for lack of a better term. And then the additional COLA for fiscal year fifteen would be a part of the budget planning process that we're commencing with the budget instructions that we just talked about.
Is there a motion on the floor to?
And I would say, and I, like I said, I, notwithstanding the discussion about restraint, I mean, I, I do, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that it, from a dollar perspective, it's, it's a pretty small amount of money, I think, in comparison to the overall budget, and the importance of the folks that we're looking for here, and what they bring to the organization.
I'll make a motion, that we accept the recommendations of the town manager.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, Paul?
Those were the key words, it's just a small dollar amount, we hear that with every contract, with every raise that comes with us. What I'm really concerned about with this is that everything's lumped in, it's lumped in for a purpose, I think, which is strategic, that you, you put it all in here, and everybody gets a raise at the same time. Some of the questions I'd like answered is that, why on a Saturday are four people working in the recycle center when we can't staff it? When there's, there's, I mean, I've been down there on Saturdays, and you'll have four people working at the recycle center, which is totally unnecessary. And, and I don't, it counts on agent personnel, my, my attitude would be working in the budget. You have a budget, you have a two and a half percent increase in the budget. You know, on one hand, the town manager came to us and said, here's my budget directive, I'm giving it, giving to the department heads, we don't have input in that, correct? And here now, we, we're asked to vote for this, to increase raises for people that, you know, it could have been easily handled into the, into the budget, this is going retroactive. A year and a half ago, two years ago, under a former town manager, we couldn't get straight the accountant for six people, because they came in, we said no raise for them, because they were hired at, you know, within a month of us giving raises, and we had to bump them up, because it wasn't gonna be handled by the MUNA system. At some point in time, some of this has to stop. I would like to see, you know, the, this something, you know, if it's that important, put it in the budget, and, you know, if the town manager feels it needs to be paid retroactively, I don't think this is something that, you know, crossing guard, and, and, you know, you're saying we can't retain them, but they're there. I, I mean, I, I understand it might be hard to retain, but sometimes jobs are meant to be low-paying jobs, and I don't understand why we would need to give raises down at the recycling center when you have four people working on a Saturday, and that's just one example. And it's been multiple times that I've been down there, and, and some of these things are exempt, like the reserve and firefighters, the reserve police. But I just, I'm, I'm, everything is always a small dollar amount, everything, everything's a small dollar, yet our budget continues to go up, and it's, you know, at some point in time, we're gonna hit sixty million pretty soon to run this little town, because everything's small. And I just, you know, I, I, it's not about not paying people, but there's people who are out there, you know, it, we have such, we have, we have so, so many contradictions in this town, we have a, a food pantry that's growing for Long Meadow residents, we have a budget proposal at six hundred fifty-three thousand or eighty-three thousand dollars in deficit right now, with conservative estimates, and we're talking about giving raises. I, I just, I, I'm stumped, I mean, I, I, the contradictions just continue to go on, and, and I don't know how this is a service to the townspeople. I would say that to vote on this, you got this in your packet, you went over this tonight, is the wrong thing to vote on it tonight, I would tell you to wait a week or two weeks and consider it, because you've just seen this information, and I, I still like to know why we have four people at the recycling center, and then we still, now we need to pay raises for them.
I was gonna say, I support giving the raises to the non-union, we're not talking about. We're not talking about, uh, we sat down, we made agreement with the unions, uh, to single out, uh, the recycling personnel or the crossing guards or the dispatchers. I feel that, uh, this is what we agreed to do with the unions and we should also support our other personnel. We're not talking about giving them huge steps and huge increases, but I think we should treat all employees in town the same. And so I do support going ahead with us, so we did go ahead with the unions. Alex?
Wait, I guess I'd like to respond to something that Paul pointed out. And, and I take it from your comment, Paul, that you think that four people is like overstaffing. Am I getting that right?
Alex, my, my observations are that when you have four people and two are standing around talking, you're overstaffed.
Okay. I, I just want to make sure I understood what you're saying. I am completely sympathetic to that concern. Um, cause you know, I, I think, uh, being concerned about efficiency should be like an everyday process. But to me, that's a separate question. And I, um, you know, you're not going to get to the overstaffing issue by denying this raise. And, um, so I, I, to me, what it really points to is the ongoing need to be looking at our efficiency across all our departments. Not just assume that everybody is doing, you know, an A plus job every single day. I mean, because that's not the reality. Um, but I, I, I don't think, uh, not having this reasonable raise would, uh, go toward that goal.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I like to, it, it goes exactly to that, Alex, because if overstaffing takes money out of the budget, that money could have been used to pay for raises without even coming to the board. In a sense of that money was in there. And in my years on the board, I haven't seen a, a position that's been cut in, you know, that said, that come back and say, gee, this is great, but let's, let's cut something unless it was directed by the board to cut. You know, through budget directives or something like that. And, and the reality is, again, we're, we're facing a deficit. We're telling people, we want to spend more on capital and, but we're going to give raises sight unseen. And again, this came in our packet on Friday, so we see it. Um, but you can't tell me that, same thing on council and agent. If the efficiencies are within their own budget to, to pay for that, then they should pay for it. We haven't even been, we haven't been advised as to whether that was even looked at. Did the department heads actually look within their own budget to see if there was money within their own budget to pay for those raises? That hasn't even come across to us, has it? So that's what I'm saying. We're going to vote on something without having those particular facts in, in our, in our hand. And I, that's what I would like to see. I would like to see in a presentation saying, here's a raises, here's where we, where we have the money. And this is why, it's not coming out of free cash and have to be applied to the FY fifteen budget, which will, I know it's a small dollar amount, will add to the deficit next year.
Okay, any other comments on the actual motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to add something to answer to Paul's question. Um, some of this money will actually be coming out of the departmental budgets. Um, the money that was appropriated in FY in thirteen and FY in fourteen is not going to be ample to cover your collective bargaining agreements. What we're doing is piecing together a number of, because we have, have had attrition in a couple of departments. Maybe not through efficiencies, efficiencies, but through attrition. Take an example, the assessors office who had a change in clerks. Part of that money that is saved through attrition is going to be funding these amounts here that are, are proposed. I have to do that in a number of spots in order, in order that we can get through all the collective bargaining agreements, get this signed and get even enough money potentially for the police supervisors, the last, um, collective bargaining agreement. So it is kind of piecing together, maybe not through efficiencies like you're referring to, but we are piecing together some of that. And that's the only way that we'll make this happen.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Mr. Foster, this is.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Yeah, nevermind. Good points are brought up. I, I agree with the one point, the fact is this was just in our package on Friday. We hadn't had a chance to really look at it or anything. Uh, I agree with you, Marie. We've, we've taken all of our other staff up. And I guess, on one face, it would be reasonable expectation that we would follow through on the other staff that aren't, uh, part of an operating union or whatever. And I also have to agree with what Paul's saying. This, this is another forty-five thousand dollars here on top of the six hundred and some thousands. So now that figure goes to above seven?
No, it would not, because this was calculated as part of the overall, it's, it's included in the calculation of the six eighty-three. It was taken into consideration.
So I guess if we took it out, then it'd drop down to six forty, then?
You would, if you took it out, you would drop it down, that is correct.
I think it's fair, but I think it's part of a bigger discussion that we still are not having. And I think that's my real problem with it, but I, you know, I have to support the thing because it is, it is fair to our employees. I, I, I feel, I feel remiss that we would have the power to deny the other employees, uh, a COLA that went to the other members that are represented by an operating union. I disagree with the COLAs because these are, these are not COLAs. These are not connected to anything, and I've mentioned that before. They should be some, some national indexes, should be a figure that, well, we're just grabbing two percent. It means nothing, you know, you might, I don't know why they call them COLAs, might just call them a raise. It's simpler, it's not, it's not a COLA, it's not connected to any index out there. It's just, and I think I've had that battle before, but I just, I'm the only one that has that, so.
And can I, Richard, I agree with you. I don't want to be unfair to employees, but I also want to be fair to the taxpayer.
Right.
And quite frankly, this is not the way you handle something by getting a letter on a Friday without the explanation. Now we just heard that that was already calculated into the, the deficit. When did you learn about the deficit? A month ago? At the joint meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, so this information was there a month ago, we got it on Friday. And I would like, I would have been, it would have been more appreciated had the, some of those analysts been in there about that. So at some point in time, besides being fair to our employees, we need to be fair to the residents who pay their salaries. And that's the thing that gets lost in the discussion all the time, is the residents who pay their salaries. And, and that's what I'm looking at because this isn't the right way to handle it. And I, and I just, I think that to give raises overall without looking at it and saying, you know, this is not a union. So we're just going to give blanket raises without, but I'm not going to. I, I just want to be, us to be fair with the taxpayer.
I, I guess the issue's still hot, Marie. I would like to understand Mr. Santinella's view a little bit more. And I, how would you recommend we handle it, Paul?
Show me where you're going to save the money. Don't keep coming in here and saying, well, we got to give raises just because. There's a reason why some of this is non-union. I mean, there's a reason, there's, there's an advantage to the town as well that some of it's non-union. But just to say that, you know, that without, we just had, Mr. Gold just told us that our, you know, we're in a deficit in our solid waste, um, fund. Where is that, where are the salaries for these folks coming from? From the solid waste recycling fund? From general funding, solid waste recycling, that's where those employees are paid out of. That's the cost of operating that center. So, yeah, again, we have, we have a, a fund, a taxpayer, this is taxpayer funded, but that fund is in deficit, which means we're going to have to raise taxes and, and offset it next year. You can't carry a deficit in your solid waste recycling. So, so, but just put the raise on there, it's okay, doesn't affect it. And, and again, the numbers, it isn't the number that matters. What matters is how you handle it. In a private business, this wouldn't happen. And I understand government isn't business. But that's not how you present something to the board and say, here's how we're going to handle it. And you have a, you, you, and those are the things that we need to start looking at, Richard. It's not, it's, when you take care of the little things, you'll take care of the big things. We don't take care of the little things, so this just keeps going. A year and a half ago, we had, we had, we had employees that came on board after raises were given to the same group of people. And, and we, and we couldn't, in our system, track it. It was so much work to track that they came in and were on a different pay scale that we were recommended that we, we increased the salary of those folks. Even though they just got here, they got a raise, literally. Someone within sixty days of coming here, they got a raise. Because our, our staff couldn't handle two different pay scales for, for a group of people. That wasn't to the benefit of, of the taxpayer. That was to, to the benefit of the people and accountant who couldn't keep track of those two different salaries. It wa, it was an issue for them. So, you know, we, we come to these, again, it's the little things. It's a little forty-five thousand, it's a little ten thousands that add up. When you want to spend more on capital planning, it comes, it all comes out of the same nut. So every time we, we slice a little bit of that nut off, there's less for the rest of the stuff that we really need to take care of. So on one hand, we pontificate how much it's important that we take care of the big things in town, but we don't take care of the little things.
But we did not, uh, we did not have any more justification for our union increases. We were giving no budget background or, we just approved them.
The majority of the board, board did, correct?
Yeah, it, and I, and I agree with what you're saying. I like that accountability aspect, but we gave away, I don't know how many, three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars without the talk of what's the budget impact? That, that discussion never hit the table properly.
And I think we made it clear tonight that we're expecting a balanced budget to come even with these salary raises. And though we didn't take the vote on any priority goals, I think that there was a clear directive from the select board and our CFO that they're planning on giving us a balanced budget, even with the, uh, wage increase for the non-school, non-union personnel. Uh, so are we ready to vote? All those in favor? All those opposed and abstained?
I have to abstain, I have to, I should state, I'm abstaining based on a conflict of interest statement that I've signed with the town clerk.
Okay, thank you. Now let's move to the casino mitigation, um, subcommittee report. Paul, you said you wanted to state something? I know that a lot of what's occurring, we can't go into too many details, but we can talk about a few things. Paul?
Yeah, before I get to my motion, I had a conversation with Mr. Gold and we started down this path at the council and agent when we had our meeting there about what the issues we saw of a casino impact in Long Meadow. And we had a long, long list. And one of the things that I think that's missing in this whole argument, and after the conference call we had with MGM on, on Friday, I am even more concerned about where we are in the process and more concerned about how this is going to get handled. And, and, um, we never put that list together. And I think the only thing that should ever be, should ever go in executive session, and I, and I'm really kind of, I, I don't like this, you know, here's a bunch of information, but you guys can't talk about it in public, because then it becomes public. The only thing that really should be in executive session is what do we think it's going to cost the town to mitigate all of these items that we have on there? Would mean an increased traffic, um, more public safety. And I understand the traffic study, we need that number, we need to argue and so forth. But I think we need to put down that list again and work on that list and come up with a number, that says, here's what we believe the cost to mitigate a casino in Springfield would be to the town of Long Meadow. And that, and then what the cost of that could then be in executive session, because you're talking about salaries and, and things like that. But, and I think it could be an executive session based on what, what we were told. But I really think we need to get back to the basics and say, here's what the issues that the board believes in that will be there. You know, we're mitigating something, which means we know there's going to be an issue to the town of Long Meadow. We haven't, and our residents talked to us, had a forum, we've seen emails and so forth. And most of the emails were somewhat generic. I mean, they didn't say, here's what I feel. Some people did, some people were, were very thorough and, and I can't remember the gentleman's name, but he was dead on in, in his call of it. But, um, you know, I think we need to get back to that. I think we need to figure out what is this going to cost the town of Long Meadow if it comes, perceived or not, you know, real or not. And, and because MGM is going to come in here and I'm, I'm totally convinced, without giving up anything on the phone call, that it's going to be a battle. And it's not going to be a battle that we win because their guys were, I, I was just so disappointed. And I guess we could talk about that in executive session, no?
No, unfortunately, we're sort of stuck, we can't talk about the phone call, that's it.
I just want, just on terms of executive, I can wait, Mark, go on. I just want to talk about the executive session.
No, I, I was going to make a different comment, kind of pursuant to this.
Well, actually.
Well, then let me jump in then, because I, in terms of answering your question, I, I mean, to some extent, I think it, it certainly feels a little awkward to do things that way, Paul, but I, you know, we hired attorneys to guide us through this process, not only to make sure that we were complying with mass general laws and how we conduct the business, but also to make sure that we were serving the interests of the taxpayers by putting ourselves in the best possible position to negotiate a surrounding community with MGM. And there are strategic factors that go into that, as well as factors that are set forth in the statute. And then other factors that are just playing out, you know, as we speak. And my only comment beyond that is they have given us advice in terms of how we should be doing this. And I just, I, I recommend that, that we follow their advice because that's why we hired them. And, because they're, they're trying to protect all of us and everybody, and everybody in the town. They're working for us.
Mark?
I, I truly believe in, in, you know, if you're paying good money to attorneys and then, and, and you hire them for being what they are, you ought to listen to them. I also, though, believe that, and I'll use specific examples. I think that it's, we ought to feel comfortable speaking in public at an open meeting saying that we believe, based on the list we've come up with and our discussions in public on what is involved with that list, that the town of Long Meadow ought to have mitigation value of eight point six million dollars per year with an upfront payment of X. Now, the executive session portion comes in with, but we'd settle for something seven point nine billion dollars with an upfront of what? But I don't see why in public, an open session, we can't put together that list of what we truly believe to be the factual dollar impact on the town of Long Meadow, based on the list that we have. And why that would be counter to the advice of our attorney. We're not negotiating, we're coming up with what we believe to be a collective list of items and a dollar figure on those items. And, and I'd love to see us do that so that the people in Long Meadow understand, A, we've been thorough in the list and B, we've been appropriate in the evaluation of the impact of that, those items on the list.
And I, and I do believe that with, with the article on the warrants to advance funds to retain the expertise we need to really truly assess that list and the cost thereof. We will be in a better, better position to do that. I think some of that can take place in open session.
But, but I, but I think that, that the warrant article only begins to scratch the surface of that list we came, Paul founded, the list we came up with at the Greenwood Center. And, and, you know, for example, you know, you know, why does, you know, we need to add X number of people per shift to the DPW because we're going to have to clean our parks more often. We need to budget for redoing our road surfaces, you know, more frequ, you know, that's information we feel comfortable with, saying we want it on the list, we want a value based, put on it based on our best estimates of our town employees who are in position to make those estimates and come up with the, with the, with the dollar amount. But so far, we've said, you know, traffic mitigation and something like that. And I'm not comfortable here saying that we're going to focus solely on traffic or we're going to focus solely on, on something else. We had a very, you know, what are there, twelve, sixteen items on the list?
To some extent, we're kind of going back and forth on strategy. I mean, Mark, we've gone, we've had the discussion of shotgun approach versus rifle shot. I mean, we, we've kind of gone around in terms of how we want to strategize this. And the, the select board can, can, and, and we have discussions about strategy. To some extent, I think unless you, because MGM can go to YouTube and watch these meetings and hear, and counter, you, you heard on the call.
But I'm not saying strategy here.
But those are strategic questions, Mark.
A strategic question of whether or not we believe we're going to need to clean the parks more often? That's strategy?
Yeah, because we, we may not need to clean the park, what, what would that be based on?
Well, then we wouldn't claim it if we were negotiating, we wouldn't say something that isn't, isn't true, correct? And we're not going to try to mitigate, mitigate increased cleanliness in parks if, if it's not going to happen.
Well, I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't want to get into the whole, what's our, what's our, what's our strategy for doing this? It seems like we're on a.
I'll tell you what our strategy is, is to load the bucket.
That hasn't been our strategy, Mark, that hasn't, with the board decided.
But, but neither has the board decided, we're going to go in there with, with one little thing in, in our hand either. If we've gone in there and say, all we want is money to redo this traffic lights, shame on us. You know, if, because I don't hear, remember us saying that, or I'm just making that one up. But, you know, we, I thought we had said, you know, said, we're going to listen to some experts, but we're going to go in there. I mean, I truly believe that we have as an obligation of this board to pursue and secure the highest possible mitigation settlement from MGM. That's our fiduciary responsibility, to pursue and secure the highest possible mitigation settlement. I can say it a third time. We haven't done that and we need to pursue and secure. I can say it a third time. We haven't done that, and we need to pursue and secure that.
That is, Mark, that is simply not true. There are just different ways to get to that highest possible mitigation settlement. And that is the ongoing question that we've been having. It's not like we've said, nah, if we go for one thing, we'll get, we'll get a lower payment, that's okay by us. It's how do we get the most important impactful thing? Because, oh, by the way, you can load the bucket, an arbitrator can throw nine tenths of it out, and then what are you left with? You left, you didn't focus on one thing. And that's, and I don't know the answers. I'm just saying, these are the questions we've been talking about for months.
Hold this. This is important to me. Why are we presuming that the arbitrator is going to throw nine tenths, you know, we don't know what they were.
Because we can't prove any of this. Not any of it, but there are certain things, there are certain things you cannot project within a reasonable margin of error.
I think, well, first I want to say that we're talking.
I think it's a failed, it's a failed approach, in my opinion. And I think our obligation is, is to listen to your attorneys, but to pursue. And, and anything we do that doesn't pursue and secure the highest possible mitigation is a failure on our part.
We're not, who says we're not pursuing the highest possible mitigation?
Wait, wait. I think that what we're talking about here is you want to take the original list, and you want to expand on it, see what some dollar numbers are. I don't think there's anything wrong for us to do this in a special session. We can set it aside, and we pull the information together. We'll hand it to Stephen and his attorneys, and they will then talk to us about.
Time out. Our attorneys. Let's make sure it's our attorneys, number one. And number two, I don't think we should be putting up these numbers. I think we have people who are, the town employees ought to be doing that. You know, for us to sit here and say, well, we think it's, you know, you know, we've got some people who know their stuff. Beverly Herschhorn has been working on this. We've got Karen Koppman working on, we've had people working on this stuff. I, I'm willing to let you do it, but, you know, and, and asking that to be done by the town employees, but it's got to get done.
But, but there's limits to how much the town employees can do, and that's why we need to bring in outside help, Mark. And we have been working on it for months. And that's where I take great offense at the suggestion that I'm somehow not pursuing the greatest mitigation payment.
That is, I, I've had a very similar conversation many times. And my understanding is that there are two, we have lined up for tomorrow night, two different experts that, once we get the money approved, are going to help us to finish fleshing out these twelve or twenty-five points. And so we're not just looking at one, all of them. In fact, I have in front of me something that I was just working on last night. And it's something, I was thinking we could all sit down and work together, and I think we need a special session on it. And we'll get more input, and we will get actually better input once we get these experts online. And one is a traffic consultant, and the other is a public safety, actually, who, who deals with all of the projects.
Broader municipal operations.
Municipal operations, yeah.
Can I just have thirty more seconds?
Okay, and then I have to go to Alex, who's been waiting.
The reason why it's important to do that, Mark, is, is our department has have been doing research, reaching out to other colleagues, and they've been working on it, on top of all the other things they have to do. And so the level and depth, the depth to which they can get into an analysis is limited by their time and by their expertise, because they're not researchers. They're, other than the librarian, but the police chief is not a researcher. By bringing on people who study these types of things for a living, we'll get a much more reliable understanding and a much deeper analysis of the impacts you're talking about. And so, but we need an appropriation to bring the people on to do that. So it's not an unwillingness, it's just we need to be able to hire the people. And that's why the article is so important to the next phase of our strategy.
Alex?
Okay. I guess, I was not party to this call, and nobody filled me in, so this is all sort of.
No, I wasn't part of it.
No, I understand, but maybe, maybe somebody did fill you in. But I guess what I want to, this idea of we needing appropriation, I thought we discussed this last time, when I asked you, are we, were we powerless? And I think you conceded that we were not powerless to move forward earlier. I, I have a concern, and I remember thinking this at the time we came up with this list. And I remember thinking, well, that's a nice list, but what's the action item coming out of the list? I mean, those were just sort of nice thoughts. But what was the implementation behind it? And this is what I, this is the drum I've been beating, you know, since July, like, we need to start collecting the facts. I mean, these sorts of, the idea that we're even having a discussion about, oh, we're beginning to assess the impacts. I mean, because understanding the impacts is just one part of it. Then you have to understand, how are you going to mitigate those impacts? And then how do you quantify the mitigation? The time pressure we are under here is tremendous. I was at the Springfield mitigation committee meeting, and Tim Brennan was there. He talked about the idea of an extension. It sounds like, the way we've been operating, we're depending on this extension. You know, but even if you do get the extension, you're probably looking at thirty to sixty days. That's what he's talking about. That's not a lot of time. So, you know, it, to me, the idea that this is just sort of still, like, up in the air, like, are we going to look at all sixty? I mean, we should have been, like, as soon as that list was put together, we should have had town employees looking at it, assessing that.
We did. We did. We have.
For six months.
We have been working on it for six months. We have had town employees looking at it. Again.
Well, not that list. That was August.
Yes, that list.
How, how were you working on a list before the list existed?
No, when the list was.
Actually, the list being.
When the list was produced at Greenwood. Well, he took it first, but when the list was produced at Greenwood, we took it back and as a team, at department head meeting and beyond, we started looking at the factors. Again, there is a limit to the depth to which our team can get. They've gotten good information, they've talked to their peers in other communities, but to really develop a cohesive approach to cost out the implementation items, because I, I finally agree with you on something on this. You're right, the focus has been, what's the problem, what's the problem, what's the problem? Hasn't been, what's the specific solution, and how much does that cost?
Right.
That's why a more cohesive analysis, the people who can do the nationwide searches and research this thing and have a, a database of experience with these types of issues, can help greatly in drawing down to those costs. And honestly, that has emerged, because the board decided we were going to let our attorneys help drive the decision as to what experts we were going to bring in. That is the process that's playing out. So everything is going according to the decisions the board has made to date. And I feel like if we go back to a list, when the attorneys also have the list, and are advising us to maybe focus on other, some things versus others, if you want to second guess the attorneys, that is fine. But process, the process has been playing out in accordance with the board's directives to both me and to the attorneys. And if we don't like the directives that have been given, change the directives.
Okay, so here's the concern that I have had. And I've expressed this to you directly, outside this meeting. I have not seen anything, like, that has never been in our packet. All these great things that are supposedly being done about assessing the impacts, beginning to figure out what the solutions to those impacts are, I've not seen one written document. And here, I, other select board members have been questioning how much we've been doing. To me, the natural response to that would be, here, let me show you what we've been doing. Here's, here's the analysis. To, to my mind, the only concrete thing that I've seen is an email that Eric Madison sent out asking other fire chiefs what the impact of the Connecticut casinos were. So I'm hearing that all these great things have been done. All this fact gathering has been going on for the last few months. I haven't seen it. And the fact that I haven't seen it, and we've been asking for it, makes me question how much it really exists.
Well, that's, we have a casino subcommittee that was delegate, that was authorized by the committee, by the, by the board. We have attorneys. We discuss this information. And that is part of this strategic process that we are engaged in. And I feel like I have reported on some of our findings to date. I feel like I have included some information in the packet. I am personally mistaken. But the avenues to understand where we are in the process, the steps we're taking, what the advice we're getting from our attorneys, you know, those things have all been, I think, established. And I guess I, I, I'm, I think we're following them. And they may not be convenient or intuitive, but it's, it's the process that we have, that this board collectively decided on, even if not everyone agreed on every part of it.
And my understanding, there should be some information forthcoming fairly soon from the, some, some of the studies MGM is going to be releasing soon. And I think there's going to be another large meeting next week. Tim Brennan said today he was trying to pull together, so we can understand as all the towns where we are in the process. And I think it's time for Paul and I to have another subcommittee meeting this week to sort of assess how much we've gathered so far, and we'll try to get a report out. So hopefully more will be coming through this week.
Well, you know, one thing that I thought was good, and I think it was Paul's suggestion, that we be copied on any correspondence with our attorneys. That's been very helpful.
Yes.
I mean, to the extent that you and Paul have received reports of all this fact gathering that's been going on.
No.
Okay, well, that was the suggestion that Stephen just made. I would love to see those as well. I, I think being CC'd on those as well. Because, like I said, literally, all I've seen is one email.
Well, oh, you should have had more than one email from the attorneys.
No, no, from me.
Oh, from you, yeah.
What I'm saying is, what I mean is the fire chief email. That's what I mean.
That fire chief. See, the issue we have is like, there's a lot of times, it's how much we can share. What, like, the conversation on Friday was confidential. If we send it to a quorum of the board and we start discussing, it has to be open session. So that's why the subcommittee has been set up. Paul, go ahead.
Yeah, a couple of things is, just so you know, you said that. I didn't get any of that. So if it's been done, it's been done, but we haven't seen it either, so. That's exactly my point, is that what the attorneys are saying is confidential. I don't believe it is. I don't think we're, you know, we're, we're sitting here, we're playing by the rules. There's, there, this, this game in law was established by the legislature. The Mass Gaming Commission forms, there are certain things we can and can't do. I think it's actually more of a detriment, because you three haven't seen some of the stuff or heard the phone call. And the only thing I'm going to tell you is, and my takeaway from that phone call, now, there was another phone call that was set up between the attorneys and us, but a little thing like worked, gotten away from me, and I couldn't do it, because the other phone call was an hour and a half to begin with. And my perception is, and this is, I don't think going to reveal anything that would be executive session worthy or confidential, is my, and I'm going to give you my perception. I'm going to talk about the casino subcommittee in a second. And my perception was we basically had the New England Patriots against the Long Meadow Lancers in a football game. And we were, we were, we were not prepared. And I think what we're being told is confidential, we can't talk about it, is doing more harm than good. I don't think we're going to blow a strategy, because the strategy of MGM is to give us zero.
Well, that's clear, that's clear from the correspondence.
As close as zero as possible. So I don't know what could be, what we could blow by talking about the things that we think the town should be, should be mitigated within the town. I really don't. I, at this point in time, to not be able to talk about that phone call, you guys need to know. And it is something that this board needs to understand of what occurred in that phone call. Because it is an executive session material. It isn't going to blow our negotiations. And it's something that is, in my opinion, is we are far worse off than what you think, Alex, in terms of this process. We are, we are, we are facing a company that has all of the answers. On the phone call with them was their lobbyist, who should have been there, from my opinion. But that's, you know, they have the right. And had I not typed in some questions to our attorney, they wouldn't have been asked.
I think.
And, and there's a problem there.
Okay, I think that, first of all, my assessment of the phone call was completely different from yours. It was opening salvo, very common on lawyers on both sides. We were competently represented. I was very impressed with how it was handled and what was laid out. Now, if you feel that you want to have further discussions about this in open session, that's fine. But I think we've hired a law firm. We should review, disreview this approach in front of, with our law firm, and then I will be glad to have a separate session once we've discussed this with our lawyers, and then open it on how much we can open up. Because I would love to have an open discussion with everyone on the board and fill everyone in. But I feel we've hired a legal firm to a great expense, which what the town's probably going to have to face. And I say, we'll set that meeting up as soon as possible, but first I would like to speak to our attorneys on how much to reveal. And that conversation was a legal conversation, and it was the beginning of negotiations. I was not disturbed by the tone of the meeting. I was expected.
As a client, I was very disturbed. And because I'm sitting there, and quite frankly, what I heard from one side to the other was not anything that I thought was, was confidential, number one, because there was nothing that was shared, that was, in my opinion, that was confidential. Not one thing in that, in that phone call.
And I would like to have our lawyers, actually, at that meeting, so our lawyers can make the presentation rather than interpretations of, of us. I think the lawyer should be there to answer questions.
Are we saying that the phone call between MGM and you all is confidential? That's not privileged. Right? I mean, that's.
Alex, that's my point. Everything that's being delivered is privileged, and it can't be.
Well, wait a minute, wait, hold on. The only thing that's privileged is between a lawyer and a client.
We're not talking legal privilege. We're talking about the whole concept of open meeting and everything else. So that ties into it more difficultly. I'd like to have, if we're ready for a, a presentation by our attorneys and discussion, I would like them to discuss, especially since their approach and where we're going is on the line and concern from this board. They should be here, and we should have a separate meeting with our attorneys to discuss where it's going. And that will be open meeting. And then let them decide how much is going to be opened up to the public. And, because I think that we are in a very delicate situation and a very difficult situation. And I would like our attorneys who we've hired to lead us through this.
I just like to add, and I don't, I understand this frustration. I've said all the way along, I'm just as frustrated as all of you. And, and I'm involved with it and have more conversations with the lawyers and, and everything else. And, and I'm as close to it as anybody, and more than most. It is frustrating. There is no precedence for what we're trying to do. I don't, I mean, it's possible, I mean, MGM is certainly the more experienced side of this. They are in the casino business. This is all new to all of us. And I mean us, meaning Springfield, Agawam, West Springfield, Holyoke, Long Meadow, Polymer, Monson. I mean, it's new to the, to the municipalities in Commonwealth. And again, the attorneys work for us. They are there to serve us, protect us, and get us the best deal possible. The only reason why I'm hesitant to have open discussions about what we're doing is because I want to err on the side of caution. If the attorneys come here and say, you can talk about it and not hurt, and in our estimation, not hurt yourself in your negotiating, because it is a negotiation, then I think we should have the conversation and really get consensus. And perhaps casino issues shouldn't be an agenda item unless the attorney is going to be here. And that's how to guide the conversation, because I don't want to be the one to say, yes, we can talk about this, and then find out that I hurt the taxpayers by revealing information that damaged our negotiation, negotiating standing. And Paul, we hired those guys to make those judgments. So we didn't have, we hired them to make the judgments about what is good for negotiating, what is bad. We may disagree with their judgments, but that's why we have them. And I'd rather disagree with their judgments with them in the room than not. And I think, you know, it's the timeline, the process, everything we've gone through, all the hours we've spent talking about this, we are all leading to a conclusion. I think we are all concerned that we're not going to get to where we want to be. I share your concerns about the, you know, where MGM is, is as well. But it's still, and I know I'm, I know you're going to disagree, but it's still, to some extent, early in the process. The, in terms of the licensing issuance process, it's very, it's not early, but in terms of the surrounding community process, it is still pretty early. And I just want to make sure that we do write by the taxpayers, by listening to the people we've retained, who are here to protect us. That's all.
Alex, before you go, can I just say one more thing? That's what I'm trying to talk about, is the documentation that we have got that has been talked about. We can't talk about that one piece of paper, because it's confidential. None of this is confidential, because it's, it has not, we're not, we are at zero with MGM. So anything that we talk about, and they can hear about, that's fine. You know, we're sitting in here, and three members of this board weren't on a phone call that you should have been on. And I know it would have been an open meeting and whatever, and it can't be done or whatever. But to not even be able to report to you back on some of the things that were talked about, that's where we're going, we're not doing, that's not in the best interest of the taxpayer, because the three of you need to be involved. And as far as the casinos. And as far as the casino subcommittee, I would tell you that not, it should be dissolved, because we haven't met in two weeks. There's no flow, there's no more flow of information for this list to get that information that you thought we have. We don't have any more information than what you have. None. And so my point is, I would, I would, I would recommend that we dissolve it, because we're not, it's not doing anything. The reality is, is at what point in time are we going to take charge of this and say that there is a mitigation, we have a problem?
We don't need spending more money on lawyers than Paul, if you're gonna do that. And I honestly don't believe fundamentally mischaracterizing the discussion helps the issue either.
And I'm not, you, that's your opinion that I'm mischaracterizing, but I'm telling you.
I didn't hear MGM say, we're not going to give you anything a single time.
Okay, so here, could I?
No, no, but don't mischaracterize the call of, we were overwhelmed. We were overwhelmed in that phone call, and we were not prepared.
I wouldn't say we.
We were not, and we were prepared.
I certainly was not.
Courtney, that's what you would say, Marla.
So, so here, I think getting clarity, this, you know, as a lawyer, this this idea of the conversation that's occurring between two adverse parties of being any way confidential perplexes me. And I think, and maybe, and maybe there's.
I, Alex, I told you, I was going to bring the lawyer in and let the lawyer characterize and answer the questions. To have Paul and I.
Well, can I just finish what I was saying?
Represent what was said. So I'm getting to the next action step that you wanted, which is to be able to speak to the attorneys and find out where things are standing, and you can ask them the questions about those phone calls.
No, I guess what I was getting is, I I think on that discreet issue of what is holding us back legally from us knowing what occurred between a conversation between two adverse parties, I think that could be answered tomorrow.
By our attorneys.
Correct.
Yes.
And and.
And I said I'd set up the meeting.
Okay. I mean, it doesn't even have to be a meeting. I think they could just explain it in an email. We could understand that particular point.
But I thought you'd want to ask questions.
No, I mean, if there's, if there's a good answer for it, I mean, I I think, you know, I think they uh, if there's an analysis, I'm sure they can explain it. Um, and I I I think an email would do it.
Okay, then I'll ask them to, we'll we'll contact them tomorrow, ask them to give a report or an analysis of where we are with the negotiations. So it was just everyone place, naming their positions, and let them, and then you can ask, you can communicate and ask any questions you want of the attorneys at that point in time.
So so and the the other thing that I would observe is that I can't imagine what would, so like, what's the worst that could happen if we're all on the call? That it's an open meeting, you have to give notice, and anybody can listen in?
Well, we'd have to have minutes.
Okay, minutes, okay, fine.
And.
I I, okay, so I would have no problem, that being the case, if we're talking to MGM.
Actually, there are, there are reasons that I would feel very uncomfortable if all of this is negotiated.
They won't talk to us in that situation.
Yeah, they, and also, the negotiations are all being done openly. I think if if it's all open meeting and we're all doing it, then it's, it's a totally dimmish atmosphere, and everything will move much slower. That's why we felt it was important to hire attorneys to handle it. I mean, you have to realize, when it came to the host agreement, the city council in Springfield had nothing to do with it. They had no idea what was going on. The mayor did it privately with a small group of people.
And that was not a good process.
It was the only process that was going to get done.
Well, be, well, I mean, so you have the the, at the meeting we were at, amazingly enough, Ferrera
Yeah.
Didn't understand some basic points about the host agreement that he had, you know, negotiated. I mean, so.
Said he had approved.
Yeah, and so, or he had approved, so we should be involved in that. So, I mean, I guess, you know, us being a, you know, for example, the letter, the letters that we've gotten from MGM, those are public records, right?
Yes, yes.
So MGM can communicate.
No, they're not, and the attorney, the attorneys were explicit on that point.
Oh, right, the attorney said, that's right.
And Alex, I I think all of your questions are good, all of your questions, all of your, the points about what's open, what's not are excellent. We certainly don't want the re- the residents of La- the taxpayers of Long Meadow to think like we're trying to hide things or or not doing what we're supposed to be doing. We just need to make sure, and this is hard, I, there's a lot of pressure out there. I I understand that. And it's hard to sometimes absorb that pressure, but we have to take the long view in terms of what are our goals, what are we actually doing here? We are trying to negotiate an agreement. And all, just about every other negotiation of other agreements that towns do is enumerated under the open meetings law as something eligible. The negotiations are protected by executive session. I'm gonna guess that if the open meetings law that they revised some years ago was done after the enactment of the Expanded Gaming Act, Expanded Gaming Act, negotiation of a surrounding community agreement or a host agreement would be an exemption under the open meeting law. It just isn't, and we've been trying to work with the Attorney General's Office and Gaming Commission to say, because it's, it's really awkward to try and do business this way. But please, let's get our attorneys who are here to to help us in the room. Let's have the discussion, let's hear it from them, and let's open up as much as we possibly can. But let's not speculate, let's not, let's not risk, you know, let's not take risks in terms of jeopardizing our standing in negotiations by winging it.
Mark.
I guess I have more questions than 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 anything else here, Stephen, and you sound, sound like you've got some of the answers. So, so, in a, whether it's a, in a traditional negotiations or non-traditional negotiations that may be covered by the, protected by open meeting law to be confidential, whether you're an executive session or not, the the select board generally sets the parameters of the negotiation. Negotiating team, here's the high you can go, here's the low you can go, here's what you should ask for, here's what we'd accept, whatever it is. And yet, I'm not he- I I, I'm not hearing any of that here. I'm not feeling that the select board is involved in any of that. Have we abdicated the the establishment of what we're going to ask for in the mitigation to a couple of experts who have yet to be hired? Have we abdicated what, you know, what are, not just, not our strategy is, but what we think the the harm will be to Long Meadow, or the impact will be to Long Meadow? Whether we can prove it or not, are we abdicating that to experts or and or or not? Or are we allowed, since they can't prove the negative, why do we have to prove the positive?
Well.
So there are three questions that are in there.
Um, let me just answer two of them with one answer, and that is, there's been no abdication of anything. No responsibility's been abdicated. It's, this is just another step in fulfilling the strategy and the directives that the board has previously set forth. And again, it's going to, when the question was, fill the bucket versus limited items. The shotgun versus rifle shot approach. We've had this discussion several times. Again, I don't think any of us is a hundred percent confident one way versus the other is the right way. I know I certainly am not, and I've given it lots of thought and talked about it with the attorneys a lot. Because, because the goal is get the maximum mitigation payment, and there are, and there are, no, I'm talking, no.
He needs to finish.
No, I'm gonna finish my thought.
He needs to finish the statement.
I I would say.
Okay, you're hurting us.
Oh, really?
No, let me just.
Oh, really?
No, let him finish.
Let me finish my thought. Let me finish my thought.
Have a chance, yeah.
There, we have tried to.
That may be, that may be played back at an arbitration, but go ahead.
Okay, um.
But you don't want to listen, so that's fine.
I uh, I would say that the, again, getting to the depth of analysis, to quantify the range of things, what is the cost to mitigate the impact on the long list? Getting some advice from people who do this, who look at things in this region and across the country, and who have the capacity to to get data and analyze it in a way that our our department heads really don't, because that's not what they do, will help get to those points that you want to get to, and that's why this is just another step. And the third question was, sorry.
All right.
Yeah, but I mean, it was, I think it was a general question about um, where are we going?
Well, yeah, I I mean, I I'm concerned that, for example, let's follow up here, that this whole idea of, you know, I'm, we we started using this expression, fill the bucket versus versus not fill the bucket, or shotgun versus targeted, whatever it is, you know. Somebody needs to explain to me the advantages and disadvantages of either approach so that we can better establish which of those approaches we feel is appropriate for the town of Long Meadow. And at this point, I haven't heard from anybody the disadvantages of those approaches, nor have I heard the advantages of those, and I've been led to.
Yeah.
Can I?
No, the attorney sat at those chairs, we had that discussion.
Well, I think the questions that are being asked, I think we opened up the door to communication with the attorneys by all select board members, since we have difficulty being able to communicate with each other. And Mark, I am as frustrated as you are. A month ago, I got on the phone with Dave Martell, I said, this doesn't make sense that we can't go in executive session to discuss the parameters of negotiation. And he looked into it, he says, you can't. And I said, that's crazy, and they're going to keep looking into it. But our ti- hands have been tied by Boston, so hopefully each of us, if we feel the need to communicate directly with the lawyer, to get a response back on our questions, to bring them in when we can. But again, how much we reveal in our negotiations, if we do it as a group rather than we do it individually. So, Alex.
What I was trying to, I think we need to be careful about not misstating our true intentions. You said, and I I, and I'm gonna assume that that was mistaken, that we're trying to get the maximum out we can, okay? That's actually not what we're going to do if we're bargaining in good faith. We're not simply trying to get the maximum we can. We're trying to get the maximum that addresses the actual impacts on Long Meadow. That's why, and and so the concern that I have with the term fill the bucket, it could be misconstrued by an arbitrator in the future, that we're simply trying to get more than we're entitled to. I don't think we should be trying to get more than we're entitled to. I think we're, we should be trying to get exactly how much we're entitled to. And I think what we're fighting against is something that Paul pointed out. We're dealing with a very determined adversary, which, by the way, is of no surprise to me. Corporate interests fight really hard to hold on to their money. We knew that going in. The fact that, I mean, you know, that they're sending us letters essentially suggesting that we're going to get little or nothing, at least upfront, you know, that's par for the course. So I just think we should be careful about what we're saying, because, again, I I'm assuming you didn't mean simply as much as we can, but really, just as much as we're entitled to.
Yeah.
I completely agree. We should be careful about what we're saying in public about the casino issue. I a hundred percent agree with you.
Okay, any, so the next step on this goal will be, I'm going to try to get a meeting together. But in the meantime, everyone has access to all materials from the attorneys. And anyone who wants to email the attorney to get clarification or ask questions, and even about the conference call that occurred, I don't feel comfortable serializing, speaking to everyone about it, because then it becomes deliberations. But if, Alex, you want to call the attorneys directly and ask how things are standing, that might be, or Stephen with an attorney, whichever. But I will set up an appointment so we can get the attorneys in here to help clarify where we are, and also how much we can really discuss as a group, because I think a lot of this, we still want to be able to have some more input on.
Did we watch sixty minutes? I'm sorry, Richard.
Yeah, I.
Mm-hmm, Richard.
I object to the whole thing. I don't, I don't really think we want five individual board members calling the lawyer. I I'm sorry, because then we're just, these arguments are going to go on forever then, because we're not going to share information, because there's. I think it's appropriate to have.
By the way, I I was not going to take her up on that.
Okay, I think, I think it's appropriate that we have, we have a gatekeeper on this thing. We've hired a legal firm, we have a town manager. I understand there's a right that we all want the information, but I don't think we gain much by having five people go off on their own vendetta or their own track for the search of excellence, Marie.
Well, I just want everyone comfortable with the process. I don't think that anyone would take advantage of it and call them constantly, because that's money. But if, you know, that reaches a level of concern about a specific issue, and they don't feel the response is clear, I would say, let them, but that's up to each individual select board member. I'm not the one stopping them.
But that information, of course, if they call, I'd like to have that information too.
Okay.
So, one of the things, Stephen, that you said within the last twenty minutes i- i- is that, you know, we should be listening to our attorneys and let our, I think your phrase was, let our attorneys guide us. So we, one of the things our attorneys of guidance, that some of us may or may not agree with, and Alex, because you're about to make a motion that is counter to one of the guidances of our attorneys. Or if I believe that what your motion is going to be about the taking a position as the select board on this on on this article that's before tomorrow night's uh town meeting. So we can do it, if 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 we're either going to listen to our attorneys, or we're not going to listen to our attorneys. And I think we need to either be all in with them, or just fire them and save the town money and wing it ourselves. And and I don't know what's better anymore. I really don't. I mean, right now, we've got attorneys, and Stephen's telling us they're doing the right thing, and Marie's saying they're doing the right thing, and Paul's telling us we're, you know, we're something a little bit different, or a lot different, or something like that. So I'm really confused. But I gotta tell you, you know, we've been told, follow the, let the attorneys guide us. We got a choice here. Do they guide us or not?
Paul, did you get a?
Yeah, there's one thing. I I spoke with Tim Brennan today as we were outside of, looking at with the sec- Transportation Secretary. Just, and I don't know what what updates you guys have gotten, but PVPC hasn't even signed their agreement yet. They don't have the funding for their traffic expert, their peer review. He's hoping that that comes in within a couple of days. That's what, those were his words today.
They did send the contract with the consultant.
But they don't have the money.
The funding mechanism has been delayed at the MGM.
So I'm assuming the means of work is in.
Gaming commission has not.
MGM is not funding that gaming.
No, I understand. He said that. So it's just that they haven't received the funding, so it hasn't started yet. That's what he told me, so. Okay, that was just a little information thing. And Mark, I I I understand what you're saying, but, you know, when the, when the attorneys came back and said that we should not take a stance as a board, because it would hurt our negotiating process, and I I really, I I know they put a reason on a piece of paper, and it doesn't make sense to me, because no one's stopping MGM from advertising what a great thing it is for the, for the city, for the community. And while they advocate for their casino, while they pay people to advocate for their casino, we're sitting here and saying we shouldn't take a stance, and and I said it at our forum, that I'm I'm against the casino, especially where it is in Springfield. I don't care about casinos. You can go gamble, and that's fine with me. But I really believe that the only hope we have as a community is for Palmer to pass you know, the the Mohegan Sun ballot question. That's what I, I really do. I think, and I think at that point in time, then we have some opportu- there might be an opportunity for the surrounding communities to, you know, say something about a casino in Springfield. I just, I I spoke with a a member in East Long Meadow. They have, they're, it is a laid back issue over there. They're, they've hired, they've, they've written a ten thousand dollar contract to hire the former mayor of the city of Springfield to be there, to develop a report for the the mitigation in Springfield. Or for MGM, I should say. So they're they're kind of laid back on it, and I don't see a coalition of select boards or, you know, that type of thing happening. I just, I don't get the gut feeling that they're as much concerned about the impact as we are. And they may be, but I don't, I just didn't get that read from the person I spoke with. And I do believe that we should take a stance, and I do believe that we all know, because we're going through a mitigation process, that there is going to be a negative impact on the town of Long Meadow. Some of it you can put a finger on, and other parts of it, you're not going to put a finger on. I looked at, you know, looked at this list again, and, you know, one of the things we're talking about, you know, traffic backing up, perhaps, if there's a, an accident on the highway and so forth. And you can't put, you can put an accident on the run, a a number on the run for the, of the fire department down to the highway, or maybe another police officer coming into direct traffic, but you're never going to put a finger on the cost it is to the individuals in town. And I I I think it's, just looking at everything and the the events that happened over the last week or so, and and I I firmly believe that we should support the the citizen petition, and I make a motion that the select board endorse the citizen petition to vote no on a casino in Springfield, and advocate to the Mass Gaming Commission that it is the wrong place to site a casino.
Is there a second? Okay, any further discussion?
I've I've started my response earlier when I said we're either going to listen to our attorneys or not. But, you know, and and I'll I'll preface this by saying, you know, I may believe and agree with Paul that that a casino in the city of Spring- casino in the city of Springfield is, is the wrong solution for either economic development or urban renewal, and I do believe that, and I think it'd be a mistake, but the fact is that if, if tomorrow the vote in Palmer turns down this casino, and I absolutely believe there are forces that were probably trying to make that happen, but I can't demonstrate that, that, then in fact, you know, we, we can do all we want to, but the Mass Gaming Commission is my understanding, isn't being told, "If you wanna cite one, fine, and if you don't, that's okay too," they said, their job is to cite one in Western Mass, cite one in Eastern Mass, and cite one at, and a couple, one other one, and so if there's only one choice in Western Massachusetts, we know, we know where we are, and, and, you know, I, I, I think that the issue for us, again, is not to decide whether personally we think, as I do, that, that this is a, 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 a terrible location and a terrible solution to whatever may ails, ail the city of Springfield, but rather our obligation to, to, you know, to pursue and secure the, the, the highest mitigation of, that, that we, that is, Alex, that is coming to us, that we're allowed to, that, that is truly, uh, we're entitled to, and I, I will buy that, that then, and, and our attorneys tell us the way to do that is that as a board, not take a stand, then I think that's the way we should do it. I think having the citizens of Long Meadow speaking out and voting at a town meeting to take, uh, to express their opinion is far more important than five people on the board. I also wanna state that I, I summarily reject and am very, very annoyed by what I'm starting to see as, as citizen bullying, pardon the expression, by saying, "If you don't vote, you're not doing your responsibility." That is bullying, and I resent that, and I think it's the wrong approach to take. We are doing what we believe is best for the citizens of Long Meadow, under the obligations and, and direction of our attorneys, and bullying isn't gonna make it happen, and I hate to use that phrase, but some of the emails that we've gotten, some of the ones I've gotten, have bordered on that, and I think that's not the way we approach this either. I understand people's passion, and I understand their desire to in- influence us, I think they ought to be, but personally, I'm listening to our attorneys, we're paying them good money, I think they know what they're doing, and our attorneys have, have given us advice, and I think the people of Long Meadow speaking out will say a lot louder and a lot more clearly than five people in the select board.
First, let's, Richard?
I'm not gonna take half the words that Mark took. I, I, there's no reason, um, I, I have, from day one, supported the attorneys, and I plan on following the attorney's advice.
Alex?
I think it's important for people to understand, to the extent that anybody's watching at ten fifteen on the night before a town meeting, um, that the attorney never identified how this would hurt us, and had they done so, I would've taken notice, I actually believe in these attorneys, um, and on matters of strategy, on how to negotiate this surrounding community, I defer to them, that's their job, they're spending time on it, this is a matter of public policy, and that's our job. So, to me, there's nothing saying that we have to not take a position, in fact, if, and if that were the case, why are so many other towns and cities in Massachusetts doing exactly what Paul and I are suggesting that we do, which is to take a stand? Hopkinton, for months, has taken a leadership position, it has banded together with other towns, um, that's what's possible when you take an active approach and not just passively wait for the casino operators, so, and, and the other thing is, the gaming commission has said that it will be a factor, so if the gaming, the, the fact, the, what the surrounding communities will be a factor, and yet we're supposed to remain mute, uh, mute on this point, I think that's giving up our right to weigh in on the gaming commission's, uh, decision, they wanna hear what we feel, and I, I do think that town, um, uh, residents have a right to be disappointed in us not taking a leadership position, that is our job, uh, you know, following is okay, but leading is better, um, and I, and, and I understand that their dismay, um, that we don't take a leadership, we, we just hang back, it, it kinda feels like the politically safe thing to do, and I don't think that's why we're here, and then-
Marie, I, I, those comments are out of order.
Well, and if I-
Yeah, I'm sorry, they're out of order, you're making judgment calls on the other board members, that's inappropriate. You have your views, and you're entitled to your own views, but you do not speak on behalf of me.
Okay, listen-
Okay, but you're making assumptions that are incorrect, Alex.
Hold on, I've given you the courtesy of not interrupt-
Yeah, I've given you the courtesy to listen to you, to the point that you start making attacks on other board members.
I don't believe that was what I said, I'd just like to make one final point, the, uh, to the extent that we're worried that this is gonna hurt us in the negotiations, what kind of special relationship have we had with MGM? That we're, that we're ruining? I mean, so far, they've put us off, they don't wanna, they haven't talked to us, they give us, uh, it, they, they've turned down our request, they didn't respond to your letter two months ago, asking for, uh, funds that we're entitled to under the statute for reimbursement of our, uh, negotiation expenses, what worse could they be doing to us? How could we be spoiling this relationship? I don't get it.
Okay.
Is that, well, are those actual questions?
No, they're not, they're rhetorical, no.
Or are they rhetorical questions?
They're rhetorical.
They're rhetorical, okay.
Marie, can I just say-
Wait, no, it's my turn, it's my turn.
I'm sorry, okay.
In two thousand nine, I came out, and I felt I was against the legislation of the casinos, and I spoke clearly about it, it was not a jobs bill that they kept toting, it was a revenue bill, and that legislation passed, it's moved forward, um, the town of Long Meadow did not come forward to speak against that, we had, the Springtown meeting came and went, the vote went into lie, and right now, we have been working on preparing for this mitigation, this board has been working on this since last fall, and it's been a very difficult process, and I totally disagree with the characterization of the letter of our attorneys, they can made it very clear that discussion at this point in time on, uh, whether we were going to be sending this letter to the gaming commis- commission was not what we should be concentrating on, we need to be staying neutral, because we're in the middle of these intense negotiations, I also disagree with the characterization that we've been ignored by MGM and, uh, put on the side by MGM, I feel we're moving along in the process, and this is a process, and part of that process started the beginning of September, when citizens came forward with a petition, and the petition stated that they wanted a letter sent to the gaming commission saying that it was not in the best interest of Long Meadow to have a casino in Springfield, and I respect that, and the citizens have the right to come forward with that opinion, and to give this to the gaming commission, that is very much important part of the process, and I respect that, and I also respect the opinions that are, been given about how this will be difficult for the town of Long Meadow, because we all agree that it is going to be, there's gonna be a game changer for Springfield as well as for Long Meadow, and I will follow the legal advice at this point in time, and I will not, for, as a board, vote on this, and when you say that that is the easy way out, obviously, with the atmosphere in this town, it's not the easy way out, but I feel as an elected official, that it's my fiduciary duty right now to listen to the attorneys who we have, uh, invested, and unfortunately, probably will invest out of our own money, substantial amount of money, but then, this is a different opinion of consciousness, that does not mean I don't respect your position, and it doesn't mean I don't respect Paul's position, I just disagree with it, and, uh, I feel the characterization that because we have a different opinion from you on how we are placing ourselves in this negotiation process, that we're leaders, we're failing to provide for our, uh, the residents in the community, I agree with Richard, I find that to be insulting, and, again, mischaracterization of the way things are. Now, right now, the citizens petition has gone in front of town meeting, tomorrow, town, the town residents, not us five individuals, are gonna decide, and so tomorrow, when the town residents decide, that petition and that letter will go forward, and the process will go forward, so, uh, that is where I'm standing in regards to this vote, anything additional new-
I just wanted to say, you know, I don't, I'm, there's nothing personal that you guys aren't agreeing with me, it just means you're wrong, but that's, what I, listen, what I wanna, I, it's really, I think Marie hit something on the head, you know, we're, we're going down this road of, of negotiation, and to me, we're, we're not fighting the fight, and, and that's why I'm, I made that motion, as I, I think that we have, we should, and, and again, uh, th- this is my opinion, is that we should fight that fight, and part of the fight is that, because we're in a mitigation, that means we agree that there's gonna be a negative impact on the town of Long Meadow, and I think we all agree about, we, we agree on that. I believe that the second front is the political front, and MGM is playing the political game, the fact that they had their polit- one of their political consultants on our conference call says they're playing the political game as well as the negotiation game, and that's why I made the motion, because I think we should be playing the political game, we should be trying to hit them more than just through mitigation, um, if you believe, and I, and again, this is my belief, that if you believe that it's a negative to the town, and so play, playing politics with this is part of, in my opinion, part of the mitigation process, I think, I, I, I really, uh, this is not a, you know, an HR issue or something, and I'm really disappointed that we had attorneys who are not political and don't answer to citizenry, actually give us political advice, and that's what it was, it wasn't client advice, it was political advice, and I don't think they're qualified actually to do that type of recommendation, so, my, my only point is that it is a political fight besides a mitigation fight, and, and I'm willing to take that if we, if we voted that way, but I'm all set.
All right, um, all those in favor of the motion that's on the floor right now? All those opposed? Okay. Now, I think that, that was the last thing on the agenda, and we're ready to go into executive session.
I moved to- Sixty minutes, I'm on non sequitur here for a second, six, I didn't watch it though, but I just caught something
I did- Did I point out it's ten twenty-five?
I know, but, but the, this is good for the attorneys, though, they had this thing about Guantanamo Bay, and there's this thing they call the hockey light, and when they have these trials, when things come up that are national security classified, a little hockey light right next to the judge, go, like, red, it's literally a red light, looks like exactly what you see in the back of a hockey net, that is what we need when the attorneys come to visit, so we can talk about anything, and when the hockey light goes off, we stop.
What's up, okay. A mother sports analogy, that's it.
Paul, you were saying, Paul?
Yes, um, they also had a great segment, Nick Saban, who talked about standards, um, I will, uh, make a motion to adjourn it to executive session for the purposes of, where is it on here, the, for, uh, it's not a negotiation,
Site selection, task force report review.
Task, task force, uh, sites, for, adjourn it to executive session for site sor- site, uh, task force review, uh, not to reconvene an open session.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Paul?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Yes.
Those people may still be watching.
Thank you very much for watching this evening.